Let's call a meeting order. First item on our work session agenda is information technology gap analysis and strategic plan. Mr. Clement?
Oh.
You're stopping on you, okay.
They're passing the buck early today. As you may be aware, last year, we put in the CIP, an IT strategic plan consultation project. And starting in late August, early September, Larry and I interviewed multiple firms and ended up settling with Morton Consulting to come in and do a strategic plan review, gap analysis, and analysis of our CIP plans that we budgeted moving forward to make sure we have the correct items in there, the timing lines up. And Morton finished their report late last month, and Eric Nadermeier is here to present that to you.
Hi, how are you?
I've sat on boards before, so I'll keep this brief if I can, and I'll try to keep it as less technical as I can. My experience, I've been in IT for thirty years, and probably eight, beginning of that, eight years was in development and doing database administration with the Pentagon and all that, so I've worked with a lot of county governments, a lot of city governments, City of Richmond, doing some work for Spotsylvania right now, doing the exact same thing. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background, but I've been, like I said, I've been in IT for thirty years. In the last ten years of it has been strategic planning, based on my experience of all the other types of companies and all the other things that we've worked on. But as she mentioned, you know, we were brought on board, and the, our goal was to meet with a lot of the people in this room, as well as spend some time with Larry. So we spent a couple of weeks onsite, going to the different sites, understanding your systems, understanding your architecture. Nothing I haven't ever seen before, again, you know, worked with other county governments on GIS systems and those types of things. To Larry and his IT staff's credit, they're, they're ahead of the game on a lot of things. There's a couple of old technologies that, that you'll see in the gap analysis that we kind of pointed out that you've kind of been riding with just because probably budgetary reasons and, and staff. But, you know, again, they're, from what I've seen in working with Spotsylvania and Gloucester County and City of Richmond, they're ahead of the game on, on a lot of the things. It's a smaller architecture, I'm glad that they kept up with that because they probably kept you in the game in terms of making sure that the systems run right and stay up and operational, so. So first thing we did, like I said, we went in and did the analysis, and then basically looked at your architectures, your systems, some of the things that basically will keep you from moving forward and growing as, as a, as a county in terms of where industry is going. But a couple of the first two things you'll see, can they see that on there?
Yeah.
A couple of things I noticed right away is your IT staffing is a little low for a typical county of your size. It's probably not the first time you've heard that, and some, I know board members cringe when you start talking about increasing staff. But when it comes down to is, is Larry and his staff are actually wearing two hats, one on the technical side and one on the development side. What they need in terms, in order to keep some of the strategies we're going to present here later on would be probably one or one and a half people. What you're doing now is you're basically outsourcing with other companies and bringing people in to bring in the expertise when you need it, that's, that's very expensive to do that. But there's a couple of areas where you're going to want to go with your, with your technology that will probably easily justify one more FTE. So that's first part of the gap analysis that I saw. The other one is the, the yearly capital budget of what you do is only about 1.07 percent. And when I say revenue, it's more or less of your capital budget spent on IT. Typically, what I see in like Gloucester County or other, other counties of your size, that's usually somewhere around 3 percent. And again, what Larry has been able to do with the budget and the staff that he's had, he's kept you in the ballgame, but they're about ninety-eight percent capacity on a day-to-day basis in maintenance mode. So when these new projects come down the pike, there's just not enough people and not enough budget to take care of what they need to take care of, and that's why they have to kind of outsource. And again, that could be much more expensive than actually having a full-time employee that can, can focus on those projects. On the technical side, one of the things, when Larry and I went around and did, you know, some of the site surveys, it was like, tell me about your network, and tell me about your wide area network, and how things are connected down to the library and down to city planning and out to the airport. And everything is pretty much connected through a wireless network with antennas on the roof, and you're probably one wind event away from having a real issue. And one of the things you don't want is your emergency response being down when you have, you know, a tornado comes through here, or a hurricane, or some other, you know, say a hunter has a fun time with one of your antennas that are out on the standpipe and decides to shoot it, your, your systems are going to be down. And the, and your accesses are going to be down across the board, and that's, that's a, that's one of those things, again, you, you want to look at different alternatives to putting, you know, fiber in the ground. That's not, that's not a cheap proposition, but one of the things you're going to see in terms of the recommendation, recommendations that we have is just a, a simple fiber connection between here and the TAC building up there in order to, to set the stage for some of these other technologies that we're going to introduce. And that would be, like I said, wire in the ground versus having a network vulnerability. Those, the way that that technology works is those antennas face each other, and one little wind event switches it or moves it, you know, you're just not going to have communications to get where you need to go. The backup strategy right now is probably about ten years behind where industry standards are today and causes some problems with your day-to-day access to your systems and that because some of your backups run into the, the next day. And what backups are important for is just like anything else. If, you know, you want to get your data back, you got to go back to that tape. I mean, I could probably ask you today, how many of you run eight-track tape or cassette decks in your car? Anybody? You don't. And basically what you want to do is you want to back up that stuff to disk, and that's a, that's a ten-year-old technology. You know, we all know what happens when you throw cassette tape in the back of your window and the sun gets to it. It's not good anymore, so your backups to getting your data back, to getting these people's systems and things that they run on a daily basis, you want to have a more consistent and more reliable backup, and that's one of the things we'll talk about. Your emergency response facility is kind of inadequate. When I say that, I'm talking about the nine-one-one center. A lot of the wiring and everything that's back there right now, plus you're in a basement, that's a swimming pool waiting to happen. So if you have a sign, and, and when I talk about floods, we're like, well, it could be a water main break, it could be a rain event, it could be a super, or a maintenance man walking down the hall with a ladder and knock one of the sprinkler heads off. And like I told Larry, I said, you can drown them two inches of water, imagine what it'll do to that equipment back there. So one of the things we've got to talk about is getting, getting the emergency response facility either, either somewhere else or getting that, some of that equipment off the ground, or getting it somewhere where it's, where it's more protected. And I think when I talked to Brian about it, I know that he's been talking to, about a new facility and that kind of stuff, and that's, that's kind of fits in that range of the recommendation, but it's more along the lines of just some temporary steps to get that, that fixed. And then the lack of a disaster recovery, we, we talked a little bit about the wind event. Right now with your backups and that kind of stuff, the technology that you need to put in place would help you get something back in ta, in cha, in, in the like, unlikelihood of a, you know, tornado or wind event or that kind of stuff, and then the monitoring and measurement tools to look at that. And that's what we found in the gap analysis, and try to keep it simple. Any questions?
Would you recommend surround wrap?
No. The things that you can do, the thing that's, that's really sets-
I was just messing with you.
But, but yeah, the, the thing that really sets it up is if you look at the, you know, progression of the gap analysis, it also meets the progression of what we're going to present in terms of the steps that you take. It's, it doesn't happen overnight. The big one is that network vulnerability. If we get fiber in the ground, and we'll talk about this in a minute, you get fiber in the ground and you put a piece of equipment here and you can replicate it over there, and you can replicate it up to the TAC, and this building burns down, you can send all the people over to TAC and they can be up and running, so.
I have a question. As you were talking to people about this, were there any mission or operations being currently impacted by the current status of our IT system?
Yeah, I mean Larry and I have talked about this, I think it was last month, you had a couple of outages with your internet. So, you know, sheriff office uses the state's systems to go out and look and do criminal background checks and all the checking that they do, so those types of, yeah, so you do have some impact there that, that actually just recently happened. Can we avoid that from happening by some of these? Yeah, I think you minimize some of that issue with having redundant internet. So it's like, you know, you going out to go to work in the morning and your car's dead, you want to have a backup car to drive there, so it's, you put in some redundancy with some of the things we recommend. So some of your systems are impacted by that. Some of them are more preventative maintenance, you know, when it comes down to disaster recovery and making sure you got a better backup system, you don't want that to fail because then you won't be able to-
I was just wondering if people were unable to do their normal operations and missions because of the status of the IT system?
Yeah, I mean, again, again, a lot of this is strategic planning. A lot of times I get called in on disaster recovery, we call it post-market disaster. They wait for a disaster to come in, like what happened in La Plata, Maryland. They had a tornado go through Charles City County seat over there. So I was called in after that to help them design something so that if that happened again, I mean, and, you know, of course you get the questions, what's the likelihood of another tornado? Well, you don't want to find out, but, but again, a lot of this is strategic planning in order to keep that from, keep your systems up and operational. You do have some outdated equipment, I mean, I don't know if you know the term AS400, but you have an AS400 up there where Larry has done a good job to get ninety percent of the applications off of there, and I think he's working on the, with the planning to get the rest of it off. They've moved that down to the open systems side, which is much more manageable and cheaper.
Let me just jump in to make sure I understand when we talk the AS400. Right now that is housing our CAMA software, which is Commissioner of the Revenues Record Management, and it's a good, robust software, but the system that it's housed on is aging. In fact, will be at some point where getting people to work on them or even service contracts will happen.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're off maintenance right now, so.
So we've already started a conversation with Commissioner of the Revenue of how we start getting our arms around a new platform for their management system when the one that they use now is very loved, very user-friendly, they're very comfortable with it, and we've just gone through the MUNIS conversion, so they were a little-
Yeah. Yeah, anything new like that, they're going to, you know, anything new that people are used to using, but at, at the end of the day, if you get good training and, and it's a fairly easy system to use, they'll get used to it within six months, you know, the, the ones that are hardcore drug-o or, you know.
I don't want to put that to a vote on the MUNIS. But, but we're going to have that conversation with the Com- Commissioner of the Revenue here.
One of the other things that is making headlines all over the place is hacking. Did you have a chance to see anything within our system design or system operations that would make us vulnerable? I noticed you talked about a, a network monitoring system, whether or not that would help detect attempts at hacks.
So there's, there's two things. One, I didn't do a real technical deep dive into your, your systems, but looking at what they call firewall and what you do from a routing perspective and the service provider that you go through, they, there you have adequate oak doors on the front end to keep people from whittling through. Have I seen some pretty cool stuff that people were able to do? And I shouldn't say cool stuff, pretty nasty stuff that people are able to do, yeah. I mean, everybody's vulnerable, but what you have is, is adequate. From a network monitoring and measurement tool, that is more along the lines in order to, so Larry's short-staffed, having those monitoring and measuring tools gives him a tool to keep, keep tabs on what's going on. Instead of, it's, it's kind of like putting all your eggs in one basket and watching the basket. So, you know, the ma, monitoring and measurement tools will also have a feature of security to say, like, you know, allow him to de, do that technical deep dive if something starts to go on to see if it is a hacker or if it's a piece of equipment going bad, or if somebody's just out there just sleeping on their keyboard and causing a bunch of network traffic. Does that make sense?
In your report, you had a table, I guess I'd call it, that identified various projects by fiscal year, running from essentially seventeen through about, about a five-year plan. Is that more or less capturing the, the time phasing and the priorities off of this list as well? I mean, it's not exactly the same list, I see, but it-
So my, my mode of operation is to come in and look at what you guys are doing, provide that, and, and try to say, here are the gaps, here's the problems that you have. And then the next slide you'll see are those projects that talk to that. And then you'll see the, you'll see behind the scenes, we added, the next slide will add, you know, the price to it, when we're going to do it and what have you. So to answer your question, this next slide, we're kind of-
I'm moving now.
I, I appreciate you getting me to the next slide. So we talked about the increase in staff, like I said, Larry, Larry basically wears, and his team wear two hats right now. It's the technical side, and typically what you see in any organization, whether it be government, private, publicly traded, is you usually see like a, a, an IT head guy, and then you usually see a technical guy and, and some, and some developers. The way you do it today is Larry's a player coach, and he has Andrew, and then you don't have any developers, but he has contacts with all the people that provide your systems to provide that support to you. One of the things I suggest, one of the things I suggest is getting that extra technical guy because one of the projects that you're moving towards is basically taking all these physical pieces of equipment, and they call it virtualization, and I'm sure you've all seen the IBM commercial where the guy walks in on the race floor and he's showing the executive around, says, what happened to all our servers? And one technician is like, oh no, let me go over and ask, and they're in that one rack? That's where industry is moving, they're basically moving it all into the consolidated fashion. Because once you move it into a consolidated fashion, to replicate it over here in case something happens here and to keep your organization up and running is much easier than trying to replicate the whole ball wax. So in order to do that, I don't think he can do that alone and with the staff that he has right now, so he'd probably have to look for someone that had that kind of virtualization expertise and that kind of stuff to, to finish that off. And we talked about replacing the wireless with fiber in the ground. You'll see in the, the slide that's coming up is that we actually went out, or actually Larry went out because we had a tough time getting it priced because trying to figure out the easements in the ground and the conduit in the ground that go up to TAC. As we have a, we have a project in there that basically runs some basic fiber in the ground up to TAC to keep it from a wireless that sits on top of the buildings. So that's one of the projects. The backup infrastructure and replication, so remember I talked about how these projects kind of feed into each other? That fiber in the ground, if he's able to back up the disk here and replicate it over to TAC, then your, your data's safe over there. The way they do it today is again, they back it up to tape, take the tapes off-site, tapes are unreliable. That's ten-year-old technology, and it's just a disaster waiting to happen to recover stuff.
When you say I, I get to that stage, does that mean I can operate from there or just have the data stored?
You can do, you can have, you can operate from there because another piece of that is, remember I just talked about the rack? So all your servers and all that are replicated over there as well, and that's with a piece of software called VMware that allows you to do that through virtualization. So the, the key infrastructure piece that will make all that happen is that piece of fiber in conduit over to TAC. Then you can get the backup to disk and have the disk replicated over there and get your data over there, that's one step. And then the third step would be replicating your systems and servers over there. When I do disaster recovery and I look at, at things, a lot of people start, a lot of, you can see that, you can see the wheels turning and see the, see the dollar signs turning when I say about replication. It's not replicating your whole environment from one place to another. Those are the si, the systems that you replicate are the systems you need to get up within the first twenty-four hours of a disaster and the first seven, first seven days after that. And those usually are accounting systems, your revenue-producing systems, your active directory that gets people logged on to the systems and those types of things. And those are typically, when you look at a quadrant approach, things that are important and urgent and things that are, things that are important, you never focus on the things that are not important and not urgent. That's usually about twenty-five percent of your architecture. So twenty-five percent of the architecture that you have upstairs right now for your critical systems to keep these people up and operational, you want to replicate that over there. So in, in the likelihood of this building burning down, you can take Nikki over there, you can take the tax revenue person over there, or any other systems that you deem critical to running Orange County, take those over there, set up some offices, Larry can run some cable and you can be up and running within a day.
That's if we have the additional hardware to do that, correct?
Well, there's, there's some, there's some options, there's some options.
If this building burns down, our hardware is gone, they can't pack that up and take it over there.
Well, so then we talk, we put the fiber in the ground, that gets you the communication, so that's the pipe, that's the conduit to get you over there. You put the backup to disk, so you back it up your data and it's replicated over there. That happens, I call it automatically, but it happens automatically, so your data's over there. And then the systems that are virtual, so, and this is, this is hard to grasp. So you have a physical piece of equipment, typically what I would do fifteen years ago, I would take this piece of equipment and I would load everything on it and I would move it over there and it'd be sitting there in an off state, so if something happened over here, I could turn this one on and I could connect. The way virtualization works right now is just the same way that the data works. The systems are all just data, so all the data's moved over there, so if this one shuts down, this one takes over.
That's all well and good, but the question I'm asking is-
Still need a human to-
You've got to have something-
You have two upstairs right now, and they're sitting side by side.
This building burns down.
Mm-hmm.
All, every bit of equipment is gone.
Mm-hmm.
It's wonderful that we have the system over there. What I'm asking is, do we not need to have workstations for the people to operate off of?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's just an extra component in there that we have to be cognizant of, that we actually do have to have this hardware available.
I, I misunderstood, I, I thought you were talking about the backend data center, you were talking about the workstations.
Correct.
For a lot of our workstations, that may just be something like sitting in front of Mark.
Absolutely, but we need to keep in mind that since this is a building where ninety-five percent of everything is stored.
Right.
We do have to keep in mind that we are going to need workstations.
Right, and, and the thing is, you know, you'll find, and you, you know where it's moving to, right?
Right, that's, absolutely.
So you, you have, you have your systems available, you can get your crisp, and the other thing too is with a little bit of finagling is Larry can get their home computer from a security perspective, they call it virtual private networking, you can get them to come in from home to do the work where, on their home workstation, but you're right.
Bring their home workstation here.
Or, or they can work from home?
No.
Okay.
They can't.
Okay.
That's, that's part of what I'm trying to get at here, is we have to physically, because of our lack of technology throughout the county, we have to be able to ensure that people do bring their phones or bring their own hardware over there. So all I'm saying is this is a component, and it may be a thousand dollars out of the whole thing, but it's a thousand dollars we need to remember-
Right.
That we have to have there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a host of options, there's a host of options to do that, a lot of, I mean, what, what I saw, what they're going to do in Spotsylvania is they basically have a trailer that has some workstations in it, and it'll be sitting out at their disaster recovery site, sitting idle.
And that's where I was getting at.
Right, and, and plus you have TAC out there, I'm sure the guy out there would lend you some workstations and that kind of stuff, but you're right, it is, the connectivity piece.
Exactly.
Right. Um, let's see, where were we? Uh, we talked about migrating assistance and decommissioning the AS400, and that's, that's, that's pretty much in the works right now, their, their thought, their thought process is right on that. Uh, the consolidation of entities and the infrastructure, right now, the library is kind of running its own, and Larry has some, kind of a couple of small projects in there to, you know, integrate some of that into the current existing. So anything you can do from a consolidation perspective, you're going to save money on because you have duplication of effort. One of the most interesting things I've found is in Orange County is you have a lot of player coaches. And what I mean by that is the sheriff does some IT stuff, the, one of the emergency response guys does, I- So, so you know, you have, you have different entities, like the, the li, one of the librarians does IT stuff. I mean, one of the emergency response guys does IT stuff, I mean, they wear, and they're wearing multiple hats. The only bad thing about that is you kind of get a disparate, you know, what you do over here might be a different mindset of what you do over here, and to bring them together later on to consolidate is, is, is much rougher because you have network-to-network interface issues and all that kind of other stuff, so.
Did you include the schools in that conversation or are you keeping those?
You have to keep those separate because of the way that their per, their, school's purchasing power is a lot better versus a county and city government, and it's like they get special because they're Ed, so.
But, but, essentially.
There's an opportunity for economies to achieve with certain things, with schools and-
The, the bigger, the big economy of scale is, you know, I, I've moved a lot of data centers for large corporations to a hosting facility, the school would become your hosting facility for your disaster recovery plan, that's the big one. And the, and a nice thing about is they're up on a hill, they're not just, you know, no flood thought, you know, got wind up there, of course, you know, you got other stuff, but you know, for the most part, anything, I, I've seen counties get together, I think it was Danville and, trying to think of the other, and they've gotten together where they host each other's op, host each other's, uh, systems. So if something goes down in Danville, they can come over and use workstations and, you know, and all that, so. So it, it, it becomes a economy of scale from a hosting perspective.
Well, and there's another economy, not to get too, seems like it's tech day here for the board supervisors, but if we were able to collaborate on a fiber optic network-
Yep.
That connects all things institutional between schools and the county government, remote facilities, that would probably be a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, like, um, Spotsylvania just went through a huge undertaking the last three years to put fiber all in the ground, fiber optic, all the way out to their, even all the way out to their fire stations. One of the things I saw was they had a single point of failure because they were kind of linear versus circular. So anything you can do to mesh your fiber optic network with a school with that, it gives you redundant paths, so it makes you more, more efficient.
It's, you know, diverse routes, I think, is where the tech-
Yes, yep, redundant routing and diverse routes. Um, we talked about the purchase of an integrated network monitoring tool to help you with security as well as monitoring, and then I'm not even going to get into the, the side of this, but one of the things you need to consider probably five years out, and this gives you kind of like a, a two thousand, say twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three is the virtual desktop for the same reason we did it upstairs with the servers, these things can be virtualized. So in your question about having that endpoint, if something happens, you can bring up a raw piece of equipment and slap that image on it, and you're up and running, you're ready to go.
So no disasters for five years and we'll be good?
You're, you're in good shape. Uh, so the last slide is the slide, the slide that Mr. White was talking about is the strategic plan and timing and the cost. Uh, those first two projects, like I said, are kind of undertaking with Larry's staff to do the library consolidation and the E911 consolidation. The initial ones that you will see that are, are, I would say, the second, the second group down are existing SIP projects, so you're probably already aware of those, and that, the upgrade of the network storage and some of the server replacements. The new projects as a result of the strategic planning are the ones down on the bottom there. And let's see, the, the big one for me was the third one, the, I guess the, the fourth one down that talks about fiber to TAC. Even though that's not suggested till two thousand nineteen, that's kind of the infrastructure that kind of sets up some of that other stuff that we talked about.
Is your recommendation that happen sooner?
I don't know that he has the staff and the budget to do it, but I mean, if, if you, I would say the sooner you get the fiber and the conduit in the ground, the better you'll be set to do those other things that I'm talking about in terms of, you know, buying the equipment to do the backup to disk.
Does that seventy-eight thousand include picks and shovels?
I'm sorry?
Does the seventy-eight thousand include picks and shovels?
Oh, trust me, we, we've been talking about getting a ditch witch and going through the Edward Jones- just to get over to public works. Oh, I, I mean, we had a pre, what was the guy that suggested that we string a piece of fiber across the roof? I was like, that defeats the purpose, it's exposed. But Larry, Larry was able to price that out, that seventy-eight thousand is getting that fiber run from here all the way up to TAC. You know, we talked about some of the other, you know, some of the other things like the network monitoring and stuff, but I mean, the, the big, the big infrastructure project is to get that, get that run, and then that sets up the, back up the disk- is to get that, get that run, and then that sets up the backup to disk and replication, and then taking advantage of what Larry's already implemented with VMware, those virtual machines and getting those moved over. Your infra- regardless, you know, if you have those three things in place, it just sets you up to not have a situation that you have to, you have to provide disaster recovery to your constituents when you can't even talk to them. And that gets you that redundant internet that, that Brian was just talking about.
Alright.
Anything I'm missing?
Anything more to offer, Larry? Any questions? Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Public Safety Communications Network.
Alright, uh, wrote, wrote a board report, and I, I had asked for you all to discuss this matter for, for further conversation and some guidance. Once uh, I and others were able to discern the, the work, the presentations that were made to you all in December, just to kinda recap where we were, uh, we had commissioned a needs assessment through uh, what was RCC Consultants, uh, and then it was acquired by Black and Beach. Uh, they came and made a presentation to you, made a recommendation, I believe it was characterized as Alternative Three, but there were some other pieces and parts to that. But then you also received a, a report from a staff team that had been put together, uh, led by Nikki Tidy of our assessment of stepping back and really trying to, to see how this radio system uh, was integrated with, built upon, helped a number of other uh, needs that the county uh, had been, you know, has been facing for, for some time. And so, that presentation, a copy of your agenda package, was presented on the fifteenth. I uh, took a, I guess, an initial start to maybe coalesce, uh, distill down to really what would be the elements of what I would certainly argue is a, is a, is a large capital project with many integrated pieces facing the county, uh, that's going to touch on a lot of uh, different areas into four elements, and I put those in your agenda package, and let me, let me uh, speak to those. Uh, you actually have the Public Safety Communications Network, and then there's a sub-element of partnerships with Louisiana, Fluvana Counties. Uh, let me footnote, uh, the relationship between Louisiana and Fluvana may have taken a different turn in the last thirty days because of their, I guess, issues with the water system, um, and so, we'll just be mindful of that. But the, the other uh, part is, uh, looking at some type of consolidated facility that would be ha- hosting uh, this communications network, and then the third element-
Let me, let me ask about that.
Sure.
You talk about uh, nine-one-one ELC and uh, public safety, would you include the IT department and the IT systems with that same consolidation?
Yes, sir, and it was actually just an oversight that I didn't, I'm glad you called, called that out. IT is absolutely part of that, that system, and I'm sorry, Larry, I didn't mean to diss you.
He had his own workstations.
We'll have plenty of workstations, but uh, yes, Mr. Frame, absolutely, nine, uh, IT is part of this, uh, this uh, consolidation, uh, I guess, uh, I guess, perspective. Then, a lot of this will sit on top of and be serviced by a fiber optics network, and how do we get there? Um, and then, a wireless communications element that would be fed and served by that fiber optic network primarily through deployments of towers. And then finally, and, and, and really this is where the board, uh, among all the other decisions, is how we finance the capital aspect of it. What is the operational expense considerations, are we staying even, are we going up in operational expenses? And how do we come to terms on what the operational budget impacts would be? So, I've, I've outlined these four uh, elements, four lanes, if I could put it, each one of them have their own decision points. We don't necessarily know, again, I think as a staff, an idea of the timelines, decision points, but this will be a, a project that will have a number of other, I guess, options uh, and changes as we go, go through. It's a very, in these large capital projects that are multifaceted across multiple functions, it's an iterative process to a certain degree. And so, we just have to be, be ready for, for, for those changes. Boiling all that down, um, I, I really had, had saw maybe three next steps. One is a step for you all to either agree, modify, ask us to, to look at other ways of, of going about this, breaking it down, but really getting a process going for our telecommunications network design. And, and there's a, there's a broadband piece to, to that, uh, Mr. White and I have had some conversations on, on that aspect. We've gotta go on the street, that's gonna take a, you know, by the time we start our RFP, drafting an RFP, letting you all look and get on the street, we're gonna probably forty-five, sixty day process for that. Then there's the piece with the consolidated facility. Wiley Wilson, Randy Vaughn, who I think many of you all are familiar with and, and comfortable with, the architect, has done uh, that work for the sheriff's office for nine-one-one. Uh, we would basically have him update, refresh that data, uh, incorporate the space needs and assessment for IT, and then also for fire rescue, uh, command, uh, staff, leadership, uh, staff. And then, out comes a square footage or some kind of phasing, uh, square footage assignment to each one of the functions within this facility, and then using uh, what would be preliminary cost estimates, just so we get an idea of, of the order of magnitude for, for these different functions in a consolidated state. And then lastly, would be some, uh, you know, affirmative authorization for me to, to contact my counterparts in Louisiana and, and Fluvana, and certainly represent to them that this board's interested in exploring our opportunities for uh, for any, any collaboration on any of the elements of this project. I'll stop there, I'm gonna look to Nikki or Stephanie to, because they helped me kinda frame some of this stuff out, or any of the other sheriff or anybody else. That's kinda how we see it going forward, um, and just kinda looking for you all for some discussion and guidance.
Let, let me take number two first, if I, if you don't mind, and order it. I think one of the, based on discussions that Brian and I had over the past couple of days particularly, one of the first questions that I think we need to address is the, what is the space requirement that we're talking about? If we were to look to put all these operations together in some sensible way? And then, from that, look at various options of how we get that, ranging, but, but, but stop looking at this building, probably stop looking at the existing sheriff's building, uh, per se, I don't, I don't, I think, I think that Randy answered those two questions long ago, so. Let's start with the raw space we need, and then look at options, whether it be existing buildings somewhere, or a uh, a lease, lease purchase kinda thing, or building anew, or whatever, but, but get to the point where we can make comparisons as to the next step going forward. Right now, we can't compare, you can't compare this building versus expanding the sheriff's office, I mean, those are, those are, you know, grapes and cow pies or something, I mean, they're, they're not, they're not even, uh, you're not even able to put them in the same sentence, let alone try to do an evaluation. But I think we need to get some baseline as to what the, the requirements are, uh, and then from that, take the steps of seeing what our options are, and the cost and the timing and all these kinda things, as to how we get, get to the next step. So, I, I would lift that out as a, as an important piece, uh, small piece relative to some of the others, but a piece that we need uh, to nail down early.
With that, Jim, I'd, I'd say that we need to make sure, wherever it is, we have expandable space for, for the future, and I'll just use the sheriff's office as an example. Airport terminal as an example. The expandable spaces were stopped, they, we didn't incorporate those.
Right.
And I think-
Didn't throw a second floor on there. Although the foundation's there.
Uh, the foundation's there, absolutely, but I, that is something, and I, and I agree that that is absolutely where we need to start. Also make sure, since we're doing like the GWOP, the fifty-year plan, do the same thing with the structures, so that when expansion is needed, everything's there to do it.
Right, right.
Terms of the water lines, sewer lines, power lines, connect physical space. Because maybe we wouldn't continue to use this building for its current administrative functions and managerial functions.
Well, a- another piece, and I don't know if it's something Randy does, or we do, or how we get an answer. Geography's an important consideration, and if there are geographical differences that have meaning in terms of operational efficiencies or uh, response times or whatever, all this that is, we, we need to, at some point, come to grips with, you know, where do we put that dot in, in the county in terms of where should the thing be located? Or within whatever uh, radius, whatever the case might be, so there, I, the more that Brian and I talked about it, and I read some of these materials, I realized is, at first I thought this could be a, a secondary consideration, it cannot, because even if we were, if we had a new radio system today, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, wouldn't know what to do with it. We wouldn't have a place to put it, forgetting the, the issue of floods.
I'll ask, you've had a plug space, right, no more plugs?
Correct, yeah. Max this facility, yeah.
And, and all I'm really trying to do is define a, a fairly narrowly scoped project that gets us an early first answer, so that we can start the process, because if we're building a building, or refurbishing a building, uh, or having somebody build a building for us, you know, you're talking years by definition almost, and so, that's a long lead item no matter what, so let's get with that one.
I was gonna make one suggestion too, to at least consider, is maybe at some point in the near future, throwing out a, a PPEA solicitation. I don't know if everybody's familiar with the PPEA, but, you know, put the private sector's brains on this, and see what kind of proposals you get.
And, and I think, and we touched on-
That was one, yeah, that's, that's one of the things, either a lease purchase, or a build-a-suit, or a PPA, or, I mean, there, there are half a dozen different.
Well, and basically what a PPA does is, it says, here's our problem, tell us how you would solve it.
Right.
And, and I've been involved in several of those, and it's amazing the different creative solutions that you get, or suggested solutions to the problem.
But I think one of the, one of the things that would be helpful for us, and, and I, I ask you all is, is if we can get Randy to- Right now, we're, we don't know much of the gross square footage, and maybe some type of, of current estimate of, of the cost, whether, that way we at least are able to communicate on a preliminary PPEA solicitation of, of interest that we could, you know, here's, here's how much we're, we're thinking we need, and, and going forward.
At least two uh, items of guidance we need to give Randy, or whomever, is, do we include all of these organizations? And if so, let's list them, let's, let's not be surprised the ones, who's in and who's out. And uh, and then, to, to Jim's point about, you know, how far in the future do we look? Do we want, whatever this, this facility is, we want it to last at least, pick a number, ten years, twenty years, whatever? We need to give that guidance, because that, that very much impacts the answer. And maybe there are other things, but at least those two, it seems to me.
Those are absolutely crucial. There's a, uh, let me, let me suggest maybe uh, two ways to, to do this, um, is I think Kurt and I could, could have a conversation with Randy in, in time for a draft, just a, an outline, not even a scope, but an outline of, of the elements that would go into this assessment, the preliminary assessment, and bring this back as a work session item on the twenty-sixth. And, and if Randy's available, have him come, because I, I think it's important for him to hear from you all what you want in this assessment and what you don't want, I, I think that is equally important. Although, uh, we could work with him, so at least it'd better inform him, but I, I think at this point, for us to kinda march out and then go have him do something, I'd rather have it hearing from you all kinda working through in your minds what you're asking him to do.
I think we'll, he has a better chance of doing what we need if we have that conversation.
He might ask us the questions we don't know to ask, to answer.
I, I would hope he would, yeah.
Alright, well, we, we, we'll certainly give him up to speed, but, but see if he's available to come to the work session on the twenty-sixth to, to start that process.
I'll make one more comment as to item three, uh, I, I agree with that, I think we should talk to them, I don't think we can put item three on our critical path, however. Be nice, but.
How do you mean that, you mean we won't be up to speed, or uh, or uh, we wanna go faster?
Well, that's the problem, do, do, the, the question I had in mind is, do, do we not move until we have them onboard and all that kinda stuff? I think the answer is, no, can't be.
No, I wouldn't, I, I would, I would say that's, that's an option if it'll fit, but uh, we need to move ahead.
Right.
Right, right. And that, that's all, my only reason for mentioning item three is that it, let's, let's understand what we're talking about there, that it's, it's, it's not a critical path or showstopper item for us, it, if it can work out from a timing and every other standpoint, fine, if not, we, we still need to move.
Let me, let me, uh, because my, at, at least my perspective has changed in thirty days of, of, of the ability for, you know, three local governments to work together on something as, as important as public safety communications, given the, I guess, the things that go on with water systems. I think we can structure this whole process to have the ability for any part, whether it's Fluvana, Louisiana, I would say Madison Green, I mean, is that, we wanna be mindful of taking advantage of opportunities to, to collaborate and, and partner, but we're gonna be on a critical path of ourselves, and we don't wanna, we don't want our decisions, or be at least aware of our decisions that are precluding somebody else joining this later.
But one of the options is, we may move on our, uh, on our path, but we hold off on our backup until we can tie with uh, another facility, to say, another county, to save funds on, on the backup.
Right, and, but we're, we're in the situation of lead, follow, or get out of the way, and if we're not leading, I don't feel we're doing anything. That's just, we, we, we need to move, and I think other people will see that we're moving in the correct direction most likely, and uh, I think that they will follow.
Well, I, I think other, the other counties have got their own, their own-
Right.
Uh, cultures and their own issues to deal with, but uh, I think that uh, any place we can work together uh, is, is smart, but uh, again, uh, depending on their speed of action.
Yeah, I just wanted to give some context to number three, that was, that's my only purpose.
Jim, I didn't exactly, actually, wasn't exactly, I didn't understand at all what you meant by, uh, your comment about number three. Could you, could you hit me again on that, because I, I didn't really understand.
Well, there, there have been discussions, and actually some of the, the reports with Black and Beach and others, is that we sort of fully integrate ourselves with other counties, like Louisiana and maybe even Fluvana, uh, such that Fluvana becomes our site, and these kinda things. I'm saying, to, to put all that together, uh, would be fine if we have willing participants on all three parties.
On similar timelines.
Similar timelines, but, but we can't find ourselves in a situation where we're on hold-
Right.
Or being led in a path that we don't really want, uh, because we're trying to sort of force a regional solution. I, I don't, I, I think it's, my, this is not quite fair, but my vision was creating another jail authority, for example, trying to serve multiple counties, I, I don't think we're ready to try to do, replicate that with uh, emergency communication systems, and, uh, because that's gonna take some time and be rather complicated, so, uh, I, I- And maybe even more so, that's right, and so, uh, and frankly, there didn't seem to be, unless I missed it, in, in the Black and Beach report particularly, any real uh, payoff to making it truly regional. You know, maybe you save a tower, but it didn't really look like it, and, and maybe you share, you can save a backup system.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that, that seemed to be pretty expensive.
But, but that sounded a little bit iffy.
So, you think the, the, the primary benefit there is, is, is a chance for redundancy, and, and that can come in at any time, doesn't need to be-
Right, we should, we, we should keep that as an objective, but-
If we don't have, if we don't have to alter our path by very much to uh, to gain redundancy from another, from another county.
May not have to do it, I mean, that, that's something that could be linked together later on.
And that would be wonderful, I mean, if, if it can come together and, and everybody, you know, can get what they need out of it.
Right, and everybody has to move the same general direction within a general timeline anyway, so odds are extremely good that that will happen, whether we integrate anything else or not, just purely from a financial standpoint, it will benefit not just us, but and other jurisdictions at least.
And the other comment I had, that I, that I didn't make was, this- And the other comment I had, that I didn't make, was, this identifies Louise and Fluvana. If we take this more generic approach, I'm not so sure, there, there might not be opportunities with other counties that we should have similar conversations with them, just to stay, you know, you know, look sort of broader regionally. Somebody, there might be a better fit somewhere else. Madison, or, or whatever.
And one of the, when we convene the, I guess, the roundtable of, of, of the region with Albemarle, Fluvana, Louisa, Green, Madison,
North Anna.
And North Anna, thank you, Nikki. Let me go north of twenty-nine. Culpeper, Falkirk, and Rappahannock now operate a system collectively, and they're just, we're going, they're going through the process of updating that, re-engineering it, but they're already there in a consolidated state. Here, not, not so much, in fact, other than Charlottesville, UVA, and Albemarle, there is no integration cross, cross jurisdictional. And so, from the preliminary discussion of the technically inclined folks, and certainly the chief administrative officers, there was a will, there was really a path forward for this collaboration. What clearly came out of that is, Fluvana had already bought a system, in fact, they're taking, they're commissioning that now, I believe. Louisa has gotten a needs assessment, just like us, but hasn't moved forward into the, into the next stage, which is getting into the design and, and the situation. Madison and Green have somewhat functional systems, but understand they're going to have to do something in a year, two years type of timeframe, but wanted to be, not, they wanted to take advantage of any opportunities that may present themselves. So I think this course, if, if we start down this road with, with some resolve, but we make sure that if, if another community wants to leverage our investment, keeping our, you know, our taxpayer dollars whole, but take advantage of an economy of scale, then we certainly want to be able to take, to do that in, in, in a deliberate way. But I, I agree with Mr. White, I think, given where we are right now, kind of moving forward with this in our interest, because there are other things that are tied into this as we're about to discuss.
We didn't mention the recommendation one, but I think that that goes with all the rest of them. I would.
Yeah, I, I had a, my only comment about that is that there, it's related to towers. Another activity that, that Brian alluded to, in terms of broadband and these kind of things, I, I would like to have some input early with respect to what our tower design needs to look like, to meet the dual capability of-
Broadband.
Broadband and the radio system needs.
We'd make sure that, that, that comes in as part of the, as part of the.
And that's a little different in my mind than designing, in fact, it's a different approach entirely than designing the radio system. The radio system is largely shopping. It's picking this portable, and this connector, and this, I'm not belittling it, but it's, it's a different engineering approach than these towers. And, and, and I, I, I haven't seen the solicitation, I don't know whether it's in there or not. All I'm saying is that we need to, either separately or included, get that as one of the very first tasks, because it affects some other things that are going on.
Right, and, and I know Ted Darisso with Mid-Atlantic's here a bit, and we'll hear, as I said earlier, it seems like it's today's tech day for Orange County.
It's about time, right?
Well, we've got a long journey, long journey. Maybe one way that I can, I can represent to you all that, that I'm now kind of looking at it, is that there's a real desire on this board to do something about broadband in underserved, unserved areas. In fact, I think Mr. White said during his campaigning, that seemed to be more of a, a critical need that, that, that the folks that he talked with, than perhaps all due respect to the sheriff and public safety, but that solving the broadband problem seemed to be on people's mind. They still, not that they don't want first responders to come.
It comes to operation of the county government, when we have a consultant that says work from your house, and they can't do it currently, so it, it becomes a function of government as well.
And so, one way that we may be able to approach it, and I, I, I'm pretty comfortable that I should be able to get some, some understanding that if we look at this as a, 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 driven by a fiber optics network, serving wireless towers that are deployed for fixed wireless in rural areas, I'm going to jump down into the weeds here, but then, public safety communications is one of the tenants, one of the clients, one of the primary servers, are, are entities that are served by this tower array, but these tower arrays are really being led, which we, I think, assume will be more towers for wireless rural broadband than they necessarily would be for public safety, is that at least we have an understanding that that would come be kind of lead first, and then we would fold this in. But a lot of this design's going to happen really concurrently.
Well, I think that, that including this concept of broadband, along with the, along with the public safety, is, that's something that the citizens, who are going to be paying for all of this, are going to get something directly themselves. They will, they will have something that they, that they can, that they take advantage of personally. I mean, obviously, getting the ambulance there on time is, is a pretty important thing to do, but I think also the fact that on a day-to-day basis, they now have broadband, is something that they would see as a, a wise investment.
I made the comment to, to Brian somewhat facetiously, that the, the towers might not even be part of the radio system project. They probably belong as part of the broadband project, frankly, because what the radio system needs is just to hang their, you know, particular pieces of technology on, on something.
Well, if there, if there are, since we're assuming there's going to be many more towers for broadband than there would be for radio, then we'll need someone to tell us this for sure, but one would think that probably the broadband towers would easily cover what the, what the-
Radio needs.
Right, and, and that's the reason for the first task that I was talking about, because it, it, I mean, it could be even, you know, LTE could be something that we need to look at as well, which is the cellular piece. Cellular, as well as radio signals, as well as the emergency communication system, so it, we're back to the tower.
But going, going back to something that you said earlier about the, I'm going to, I'm going to jump back to the building now, because, it seems to me this board needs to decide pretty quickly who we're going to house in this building. And I, I think we need to decide that before we have a work session with the, with the consultant, who can then tell us how to, how to make it happen, or give us some ideas on how to make it happen.
I, yes, I would say-
And then, and then I agree, we need to go ahead and, I mean, if we're, if we're going to have to do it, then we just will stop talking about it and, and get to doing it.
Or see if there are options that, that we could exercise, that we, that are more attractive than, you know, just building it ourselves.
Well, yeah, when I say a building, I'm not, I'm not saying we're going to go out and start building it tomorrow, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's, I don't think there's an, I don't think there's an existing building that we're going to be using. I think it's really involved building.
I guess.
Whether it's the county, or, or a private individual, or whatever.
Well, from everything that Nikki said today, it appears that it would be nine-one-one, sheriff's office, fire rescue, and iPhone. Is that?
I think that's the start.
I include EOC in, as part of it, yes.
Well, but we need to make, there's probably a discussion about things like Public Works and others that-
Well.
I mean, there are other potential pieces.
But I, I guess. I guess I would consider the, the various other offices that we have in this building, and the, and Public Works and things like that. When we, when we talk about the design of the building, we need to get those first four, or whatever it is, and, but we need to make sure that there is a provision that if we need to grow, as a county grows with our fifty-year horizon, that there's, that we aren't found, that we're, we're up on a boundary and can't do anything more with that.
I, 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 I think back on the elements, the functions, I'm, I'm really thinking functions now. Just went through the four, five that there are. If we can get Randy in here, you all go through a good discussion about those, and get kind of your, his, communicate to him what you're looking for on this next, next thing, then it becomes a site. Okay, what are the site requirements? Well, if you're looking at additional functions to be co-located there, then that's going to require-
Well, maybe twenty years from now, maybe ten years, twenty, yeah, twenty years.
But that, if you're renovating a building for this, initially, does that allow for phasing? I think phasing is absolutely part of this conversation, on the facility need. And so, I think at the work session on the twenty-sixth, if the schedule permits, then you all can have that discussion on the facility. I think there's an element with the communications system consultant, and we, there's also a consolidation piece here with technology between law dispatch and, and, and emergency dispatch, that we've got to work through as well. Is that, let me go check on this tower, because I think, Mr. White, and, and now that I've given some time to reflect on it, I think, thinking of the tower and the fiber optics network as, as really the underlying infrastructure that supports a lot of these other elements, is real critical for this board, because there are applications to that, that I think this board wants to be supportive of, last mile broadband, public safety. There's a whole education piece to this, about expanding bandwidth, and Dr. Tanner and I have already, as you know, with Mid-Atlantic have already started down that road, so I think of thinking of the towers and the fiber optic network as kind of a lead piece of infrastructure, these other ones have to be done concurrently. I'm not saying we're doing this in a linear process, but I, I think, let me check on, at least for the radio consultant tower, one more bit of information before I'm ready to ask you all to cut us loose on getting those services. And I'll come back on the twenty-sixth with the best information. We'll try to get Randy here on the twenty-sixth, and I'll certainly make contact with my counterparts in Louise and Fluvana. And with you alls, okay, I'll contact Mr. Campbell, and Mr. Barkley, and Madison Green as well, letting them know that we're starting down this road, and certainly keep them posted on it.
All right.
Does that sound good enough marching orders? All right, thanks, thank you all.
All right, next item, that finishes the work session. Next item is the organizational meeting. Send that on down to Brian.
Yes, sir, that's, it's the one time I get to be.
You're on the clock.
I'm on the clock. And I'm not doing a good job right here. I'm going to call to order the organizational meeting for the two thousand sixteen Board Supervisors. I am prepared to take nominations for chairman, and then with those nominations, you would settle on, then after that I would close the nominations, and then have a vote for that, for that position, and then I'll turn the order of the meeting over to that person. So with that, I'll open nominations for chair.
I'll nominate Mr. Frayn.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Move the nominations to be closed.
Nominations are closed, all those in favor?
Let me, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but the resolution appointing the chairman, may I suggest one change? It says nominate for one-year term to begin Jan, begin January twelfth, twenty sixteen, and it says end December thirty-first. That actually sort of conflicts with the bylaws, so I suggest we actually strike that end, so that it simply says nominate to serve a one-year term, beginning January twelfth, because the bylaws actually address the ending of the terms.
I understood that as part of the motion.
Yes, exactly. Resolution so revised, all those in favor of Mr. Frayn?
Aye.
Those opposed, light sign, hearing none, there.
Thank you.
Told you you were on the clock.
All right.
It did take two minutes.
And I'll open the nominations for a vice chairman.
I nominate Mr. Good.
Thank you.
Move the nominations to be closed.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of Mr.?
One, one comment, I would like to also amend this nomination as well as-
For the county attorney's best.
So words.
All right, that's how you understood your nomination?
Yeah.
All right, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appointment of the clerk and deputy clerk.
Can we table this?
This might take a while.
Move there be no change from last year.
Seven.
Hold, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Clerk and deputy clerk remain the same.
Thank you. Would have been funny if we replaced you.
Well, if you had a, made a motion to go in the closed session.
Uh, do we feel a need for a determination of a tri-breaker?
We never have it passed, so I don't know why we should change it.
All right. So there's-
Because that required that we decide that each, each year?
Okay.
You can just have it once in your bylaws and be done.
So there was no, no action. Okay, next is the regular meeting schedule, as presented.
We have it listed, yeah, here we go.
Move to approve is presented?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, there was discussion about the Lake of the Woods meeting, and maybe the start time, or, or something, or am I mixing something up?
So is that on a Wednesday again?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, that's really rough for me, because, you know, you're-
In long ways.
It's a long ways, and it's on a Wednesday. So if we could push that back a little bit.
About six o'clock.
Yeah, that, yeah, that-
No, just we say we go to six o'clock, where we'll, we'll open the meeting, and, and have dinner, and then go on to the regular business meeting at seven.
Well, they, they serve dinner, and that's when the, the Lake of the Woods Board of Directors has dinner, so, I mean.
Well, that's it, we go right to dinner at, at six o'clock.
And then come back out for the regular meeting.
And then come back.
That's actually very doable.
I suspect that they can accommodate that. If they can't, we'll move, we'll stay here. I will.
How, how about we set it at six, if there's some, and we find out in the logistics, you always can come back and amend your, your meeting agenda.
Set it at six.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of the revised meeting schedule? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item is the review of the bylaws.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had one recommended change to the bylaws, just to address what happened this year. The way the bylaws currently stand, in a non-election year, the chairman's term continues on to the organizational meeting, but the way the bylaws are currently written, on an, an election year, the chairman's term ends on December thirty-first. I added a sentence saying unless the chairman was re-elected, you know, so if the chairman's re-elected, then there's really no point. So it's just, it's just one sentence to say that the only time the term would end is if the chairman didn't happen to get re-elected.
Okay. All right.
The only other thing I found on page six, this is down in the weeds, but I read this several times and confused myself more each time. Page six, item L.
Read the bylaws.
I did. Don't ask me why.
It's dangerous.
I have a reason why I was doing it. That first item, I, I think the language needs to be cleaned up. It either says that we have to fix the dates of our work sessions and committee meetings at a regular board meeting, or it's trying to say that we'll try to make them coincidences with-
Which one are you on?
I'm, I'm sorry, page six, L one.
L one.
It, it's not saying clearly enough, for me at least, what I think it wants to say. I think what it wants to say, it should, it should, should say, the board shall endeavor to schedule work session and committee meetings on the dates of regular board meetings. It doesn't say that.
How would you word it?
Just, just like I just did.
Okay, did somebody copy that? Well, okay, read it again.
So L one will read, the board shall endeavor to schedule the dates for work sessions.
Schedule work sessions and committee meetings.
Can I make an alternative suggestion, just strike all of L?
I, I'd be fine with that, too, because it doesn't really say anything.
It doesn't really say anything.
It doesn't, it just says you'll try.
Yes, I would just strike all of L, and you, you set them when the way you set your calendar.
Absolutely.
And there's an overriding procedural legal thing that you have to meet.
But you got to do that anyway. L, L one doesn't prevent you from doing that. Yeah, that's the cleanest thing.
What was that again, let me just make sure I understand it?
Getting, getting rid of it.
Oh.
All of L.
So we'll just have a one and two.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Anybody have any issues with that?
Oh, entire L.
The entire L.
L one.
Because, because parts two and three just restate the law.
Yeah, we, we do a pretty robust way of notifying.
Yeah, we're, we're, plus the law, the state law sets these requirements anyway, so.
Okay.
It's just a redundancy to have any bylaws.
All right, so we will delete section L.
So two changes.
All right, anything else? Okay, I had a motion.
Salute.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Another fun one.
Mr. Johnson, you can take all of my comments.
Is that the nodding that I'm seeing from his head, or?
And I thought you had ideas for a few more.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I just assumed, keep it as it is, but, uh.
That's fine with me.
I, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, I've got a couple, but.
The only occasional way I have problems with the, uh, uh, with the Piedmont Workforce Board, because sometimes that's conflicting with the, uh, the, uh, rappahannas service authority. But.
Only other change for me is that in the, um, GWAP.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we need to. It's on there.
It's on there.
Yep. Second item.
Is that a motion?
What about the, uh, are we going to go ahead and add the, uh, the new, the new, uh, a, a area plan to this?
For the. Oh. Yes, we should.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
You, you have a way of expressing that?
We're talking Mr. Johnson.
What, what do you want to call it?
We called ours GWAP. What are you gonna call yours?
Well, let's just call it the, uh.
See, this is why I asked.
How about Orange and Gordonsville area plans?
Okay. Lord, wait. Okay. O gap.
Or GoAP.
You wanna, you wanna form and call it a steering committee? I mean, I think that.
Yeah, I think so. We're, we're planning on, I mean, we're gonna, I think we're gonna discuss this at our, at our, um, retreat, but, um, it's something we're definitely going to be doing, so we just.
Okay. So we've got the GoAP Steering Committee.
Yes.
Uh, that's you and Teal. Right? Okay. All right.
Are we missing somebody? The, uh, I, I thought Mr. White was going to be involved in this also.
Oh.
You can have the three.
Okay, that's fine.
I would, I would suggest, we, we're currently, GWAP is three.
Yeah, that's right.
And, uh, so I would suggest we do three again for those because it, it touches on all three at this.
Okay. All right.
Sure. That's fine.
Okay. So those are added to, uh, Mr. Goodwin's, Mr. White's and Mr. Johnson's listed duties, the GoAP Steering Committee.
Just as a footnote for staff, we're, we're gonna go through the retreat process.
Understand. But, but we might as well get this identified now.
Right. I have planning director back there sitting up and taking notes, so I wanna make sure we, we're gonna go through retreat process before.
Okay.
Maybe take notes, not sitting up. Would relax a bit.
Any further, uh, changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. We've completed the organizational meeting. We'll move on to the regular meeting. Now if I can find my notes.
Oh, where's my cheat sheet?
Well, I guess, yeah. But first of all, let's, let's do the. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. Uh, couple of changes to the, uh, agenda. Uh, on the, uh, de- uh, strike item five B, the Booster Park Spring Soccer Field Preparation. Add under the county administrators' report, uh, the GWAP Steering Committee update, seven B, Germanic Community College Capital Project, item seven C, and the revised budget calendar, item seven D. And, uh, under the calendar, uh, in addition to, uh, schedule a public hearing on amendments to I two zoning on February ninth, to be advertised jointly with the planning commission. Any other, uh, agenda changes?
No, sir. I have none.
Uh, gotta take a motion for.
So moved.
Moved to approve the agenda as modified and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, first item is the employee of the quarter. Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Uh, our first quarter, uh, two thousand sixteen employee of the quarter began working part-time for Orange County in June of tw- two thousand twelve. She was nominated by her supervisor. This employee performs duty to the highest standards, never failing to provide the best quality of care possible. She works efficiently, yet is detail-oriented, patient, and consistently goes the extra mile by assuming some of the less glamorous job responsibilities and least desired work hours. This employee is professional and courteous to all those who interact with her on a daily basis, possessing a specialized skillset which makes her invaluable to her supervisor and department. What should be recognized beyond the outstanding attitude and attributes possessed by this employee, her remarkable ability to show compassion on a consistent basis to those in her care and to citizens of she serves. With those in her care being dogs, cats, and other animals of the community, she may be faced with some of the toughest and most emotional, yet most rewarding situations. This exceptional level of commitment and caring is why it is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to the board of our employee of the quarter, Mrs. Elizabeth Thomas, Senior Animal Care Take at the Orange County Animal Shelter.
Elizabeth.
Thank you so much for your, the work you do. I can't imagine, uh, trying to deal with, uh, all of our furry friends on a regular basis. Uh, I have several around the house and I understand how emotional they can be. Again, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Business spotlight. Mr. Hildebrand.
Hello, how you doing? Uh, first, thank you for allowing me to come up here today. I've lost my voice today. I've been up since two o'clock this morning.
You've been rehearsing for this all since two?
Well, I have been. So, uh, my voice is a little crackly here, so sorry about that. Uh, my name is Jack Hildenbrand. Uh, I own Jack's Aircraft. Uh, I've been in business for about five years, aircraft sales. Uh, I own two companies. I also own a IT company. Uh, we do government contracts with the, uh, federal government and I've been doing that for about twenty years. Um, got into aircraft sales, um, buying and selling airplanes for myself and, uh, got a little aggravated with the process and thought I could do a better job at it. And just thought, you know, if I have to bang my head against the wall for a while, I will do it. And so that's what I did. Um, our first year, we listed five airplanes and I sold no airplanes. Uh, the second year, uh, I listed ten airplanes and sold two airplanes. Um, third year, we listed twenty-five airplanes and sold about ten. We're at year five now and, um, I sold, I'm selling almost six airplanes a month now. Um, we're now the, the largest broker on the East Coast selling airplanes. Um, and one of the largest brokers in the, in the country and therefore the world, uh, on number of aircraft. Um, we have eighty airplanes listed. We, and again, we sell about six to seven airplanes a month. Um, and really excited about that. Um, once you get that many airplanes, you, you get to the point where you need to do maintenance on airplanes. And so I was having a hard time getting my airplanes fixed. And I, I brought a maintenance guy on the team and, uh, and we were Stafford Airport and, um, trying to make that work there. And Stafford's got a great airport, but, uh, they didn't have the facilities that I needed there. Um, and it's interesting, they spent millions of dollars there and they don't have some of the things that we just need, needed there. Uh, and Candace, who works on the team with me, does aircraft sales, um, you know, talked to me about Orange Airport and the facilities that you all have here at this airport. And it looked like a really good fit. So I, you know, I came down here and, and, uh, you know, it kinda rests its history. Uh, we start up our maintenance shop here. Uh, we've got, um, three maintenance, uh, uh, guys on the team. We have one full-time person and two part-time guys on the team. Um, they're working here at Orange, at the, uh, airport. And, um, we also are, are in the process of starting a flight school. I really thought I'd have it running by now, but, um, we just flew our first flight school airplane in yesterday. Uh, so it's FA legal and, you know, we're in here now. So, we really should start the flight school any day now. Uh, we have another Sussno coming in, uh, also in a couple of days. And so we should have two to three airplanes in the flight school, um, within the next week. It's really just coming together really fast. Uh, I have big plans. I mean, I, uh, as a business owner, um, you know, I, I, um, I have a lot of plans. I mean, my daughter flies airplanes. She's, uh, nineteen. She started flying when she was sixteen. Uh, she's going to school delivery university. She's taking aviation classes down there. Uh, I have a nine-year-old daughter. Um, she's, looks like she's gonna fall right into it also, getting aircraft, uh, maintenance or whatever. So, you know, when I come and go, I think my daughter's gonna take over one day and run this. Um, so I'm trying to grow a business that's gonna kind of pass on and keep going. Uh, I have a lot of, lot of ambition. I mean, there's no one that paints aircraft in this, in the state of Virginia. And that's a huge opportunity. Um, it's, it's a lot of work to get a paint shop up and running, but I, I plan to do that. I'd like to set up a paint shop here in Orange. Um, you know, I'd like to have a maintenance shop here. I do have that, you know. We get the flight school here. Uh, I'd like to set the paint shop up. Um, and then from there, I mean, if you have a maintenance shop and you have a flight school and you have aircraft sales and you have a paint shop, why not make airplanes? I mean, I, I have a lot of ambition here and I, a lot of things we're gonna do and I, I feel confident we're gonna get there. Um, I take the money from my IT company and pour into the aircraft sales and the aircraft business here. Um, so I'm upside down every month, uh, a solid ten to fifteen thousand. Uh, and I'm pouring it into the, you know, just happens to be here in Orange County, but, you know, I'm pouring it into here. And if you, if you all are welcome to come out there and see. And we're constantly buying airplanes. We're buying equipment. You know, we're bringing people, uh, into the team. And we, we got a growing team. And I, I really feel that, um, just like five years ago when I started the, um, um, the aircraft sales, that in five years, our maintenance shop could be the biggest one in, in the state of Virginia. Uh, Orange is strategically located. I mean, we're nearly in the center of the state. Uh, there's no reason why I can't bring airplanes in from all over the state. And I, I plan to do that.
You said, uh, that, uh, you didn't like what the, uh, aircraft sales industry was doing, that, uh, that, uh, you wanted to get into that. And, and it's, obviously if you're selling as many aircraft as you're selling now, you're very successful at. What was it that, uh, was so bad that?
You know, it's, it's a funny thing of, you can go out and buy a car, a five thousand dollar car, and I've repeated this to a few people, and if you don't buy the car and you go off the lot, the, this car salesman will call you. And it's a simple solution and they, they were not doing that. I'm, I was buying a hundred thousand dollar airplane or trying to sell one, and they would not call me back. And I, I just could not understand or fathom why they wouldn't just call you back or answer the phone. I would send emails, you know, what's the status? I'll get my airplane listed. And I would get nothing back. Well, it turns out, most of the aircraft brokers are interested in the ma- the million-dollar airplane. And that's what they wanna buy and sell, because they make a lot of money doing that. Uh, they're not, their, their way of making money is a, is a vertical structure. You know, sell is, is, uh, they, they, they know that they can only sell so many airplanes, so they try to get the, the highest dollar airplanes. And so everyone's fighting for those airplanes. I'm kinda doing a different strategy. If you look at the airplanes I have, we have airplanes from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollar, and we turn over a lot of them. So I'm taking the business model that I do in IT that I've learned with the federal government and contracts to be efficient and computerize everything. And, you know, we got a great sales portal and we're really efficient getting airplanes listed, answering the phones, and getting them sold. And so that's where we're, that's where we're going there. That's what, and that's what we're doing is we're just efficient. We're taking what I've learned in IT and doing the same thing with aircraft sales. And really, I mean, no one's doing that. I mean, uh, another thing that I'm doing a little bit different is, um, we're taking away homes are sold. So, when a home is listed, it goes into the MLS listing. And any broker can sell that airp- that, that home. Well, most brokers, when they list an airplane, they wanna sell that airplane also. And they don't want anyone else to sell it. Well, I don't do that. When we list an airplane in our pool, any broker in our team can sell that airplane. And so what I do is I pay that broker to put the airplane in the, in the pool. So I'm upside down from there. And then anyone on the team can sell their plane. I've got a, a guy that sells airplanes in Germany. We've got a guy in California that sells airplanes. So anyone can sell that airplane. And they all know that when the airplane comes in the pool, they don't have to be the ones to answer the phone. Anyone can answer the phone. So it is completely different from anyone else selling airplanes. We have a lot of fun doing it.
Good. Sounds like you're excited.
Better like starting up any business. I, I start my day at two o'clock in the morning and I, and I go to ten o'clock, but we've all been there before. And I enjoy it. I mean, I could be watching TV or doing this. I'd rather be doing this.
Have, have you settled into the facilities recently well so far?
I mean, the, the facilities are great. I mean, Orange Airport is a really nice airport. I mean, I don't need to tell you guys that, but it's, it's a really nice airport. The, you, you got, um, uh, taxiways end to end. I mean, that's, that's, that's needed. You know, I was at Shannon Airport. We didn't have that. You know, we're taxiing up and down the runway and it's really dangerous. Um, you know, the fills, the, the building that I'm in is, is great. I mean, it's got a new roof on it. Um, the, um, the maintenance, the, the, the shop itself is heated. And so, I mean, that, that's a big, big deal. Because the, the folks in there working on the airplanes, if they're, if, if it's twenty degrees outside, they're not gonna do a good job. Uh, and what it does is for customers, customers see that too. They bring their airplane in here, they know their airplane's in a heated facility. They know that people are gonna take their time to work and, work on the airplane the right way. A lot of maintenance shops don't have heat in their, in their buildings. It's small little things like that, that, you know, people cut corners. They just try to get the airplane in and out. And they don't really look at it.
I'd just like to say, I've, uh, actually went out for his ribbon cutting and, uh, he's done a nice job inside. Has everything nice and clean, organized. He's hired, not just hired people, he's hired local people as well, that have come through the school system here in Orange and gotten trained and are now working for him as well. So, uh, you've just integrated yourself right.
Well, thank you.
With all the, everything else out there. It's very nice to have you here.
Well, thank you. I enjoyed it. I mean, the, from the day that I walked into the airport, I mean, it's, it's just been a great experience. I mean, the, and, and that was a problem I had with Stafford Airport. I mean, they built this nice airport, but no one wants the airport there. It seemed like the only people that won the airport people were the, the folks that are working at the airport. And they didn't see the, the money that can be put into it. I mean, if, if I can get a, a, a paint shop working, and I know I can, um, you know, and, and it, we can bring in airplanes from, from Ohio, from Tennessee, from Florida, and bring them in here.
I need to buy fuel, right?
They, exactly. They need to buy fuel and then I need more space.
That's what we like to hear.
I need, I need hangars. So, I mean, it, it all starts feeding itself. We need more people. Um, you know, again, my daughter started flying when she was sixteen, so I'm all about giving, you know, a young person opportunity. Uh, and I, you know, I'd love to get to the spot where I can go to, go to high school and say, hey, we need somebody. Okay, let's find somebody that wants to get an aircraft and bring them in here.
Okay. Thank you very much. I enjoyed the presentation and wishing you the best of luck.
Well, thank you. Sorry about my voice there.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the safety, safety improvement project on Route six thirty-six. Okay. Mr. Davison.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank y'all for your time this evening to maybe give some information on a project we have on Route six thirty-six in Orange County. Uh, been in contact with Mr. Goodwin and Mr. David, um, in regards to this project. I just wanted to give y'all some more information on what we're doing there. Uh, this project, like I said, is on Route six thirty-six River Road, uh, near the Nixon's property, uh, which as y'all probably know is a large poultry farm. And there's a pretty sharp left-hand turn as you're coming away from five twenty-two near their property. Uh, they're actually the ones that brought this issue to our attention, uh, some time ago, both for a maintenance as well as a sight distance issue going around this turn. The, the, um, intention of this project is to shift the road away from the river and closer to the bank and, and shave down that bank at the same time to provide more sight distance, uh, coming around that turn for trucks and trailer traffic, which visits their farm pretty regularly. Um, as well as by shifting the road away from the riverbank, um, keep that side of the road from, uh, further eroding, uh, where you've got some guard rail there that's starting to lean away from the road. Um, like I said, we're planning to shift the road. Um, like I said, we're planning to shift the road eight to ten feet, that particular roadway is under a prescriptive easement, uh, upon the landowner and VDOT, so by the prescriptive easement, um, that would shift with the road, it's measured from the center line of the road. Um, luckily, through that pr- particular section of road, the Nixon's own both sides of the road to the riverbank. Um, we plan to, once the road shifted, that guard rail that's there, we'll be replacing that with a large raised berm. Uh, very similar to what the rest of the segment of the road has all the way back to five twenty-two. To keep, to make both a physical barrier between the roadway and the riverbank, as well as, uh, keep folks from parking alongside the road there and getting in the way of traffic. Um, this work is, is, uh, scheduled to, to start here about the first of February, maybe mid, mid-February. Only has about a two, three-week duration, um, most of the, most of the construction is actually a, um, a cut situation, there is one pipe that has to be replaced, but, um, or installed, but most of the work there is a cut situation and not actually, um, so much fill, so we should be able to get that accomplished during the winter time. Uh, but at this point in time, we've, we've been in contact with the Nixon's, they're, they're eager and, and hopeful for us to get started here. And just wanted to share this information, taking any questions from you all that you may have for this road.
The, you, you said this under prescriptive easement, who, who is the holder of the, uh, easement, is this the Outdoor Foundation, or s- how, how is that, how is that set up, do you know at this point?
The easement would be between VDOT and the landowner, so the Nixon's actually own, well, if you had a landowner on either side of the road, their property would go to the center line of the ri- be measured from the center line of the road. In this case, the Nixon's own both sides of the road, so theoretically, they own the property on the entire section of the roadway. Um, if for whatever reason, let's say you had two landowners, if we shifted the roadway onto one, then that easement would be measured again from the center line of the road. But it's, it's an easement with the property owner.
This dates from the Bird Act roads, when, when in late thirties, the, when deemed what was thought to be a public road and just said it is now a public road, and here's the very prescriptive easement.
Correct, and that differentiates from between, like on five twenty-two, where we maintain, you know, four, uh, fifty, sixty-foot right away. Where we actually own that section of road.
But the Nixon's are, they're fine with that.
Absolutely, and they're actually going to help us a lot with this project. Um, alongside the bank here, there's quite a few trees that line that bank. Um, in order to shave this bank back, we have to remove those trees, and they agreed to help us take those out. Uh, so that's a huge cost savings for us. And the, the funding for these projects, just so you all know, uh, this should be a reoccurring every year thing, we're, we're getting funds allocated. Um, they are maintenance, VDOT maintenance funds, uh, but they are intended for safety items that are not routine maintenance. They're not for patching potholes, paving roads, um, a- and, and general maintenance items, but, and I, a project such as this, it doesn't really fall in our real good category, these are what it's intended for. Um, each county is different, obviously, your larger counties get a larger chunk, chunk of money, but, uh, on average, every year, we get around a thousand, uh, a hundred thousand dollars to devote to each county. So we have this, this project here, we've got several in, um, Falkir County, it's Culpeper County, um, one Madison County, so, um, like I said, each county in our residency has one, at least one.
Any additional questions?
Uh, this is one of those things that's needed to be fixed, man.
They, they're the original ones that approached us to it as far as the, the road eroding away, but same time, uh, they've wanted to have, this is actually on the six-year plan for Orange County, I believe. And, um, it's been a long time coming, they were, they were very gracious to, for us to give them this information.
Thank you, Mr. Davison.
Thank you all.
Next item is the Mid-Atlantic Broadband Communities Corporation.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm going to invite Ted Derris, the President and CEO of Mid-Atlantic Broadband Communities Corporation, to come forward. Um, just as a little setup, um, uh, as you all know, uh, we had a white paper that was presented to this board a couple of weeks ago about a project that Mid-Atlantic is taking, uh, on with Zayo Corporation. I've asked Ted to come here, introduce himself, Mid-Atlantic, and, and also this project, uh, with Zayo that's coming up, uh, thirty-three and five twenty-two. I know there's some folks from the school board and other interested citizens here that are very interested in talking about fiber and Mid-Atlantic and things like that, so with Ted.
Sounds great, thank you, Brian, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, delighted to be here. Uh, and talk a little bit about, uh, the fiber projects that are coming into Orange. Uh, wouldn't, I know times brief, so I'm just gonna give you a real quick, uh, update of who we are and why we're here tonight. And give you, uh, kind of a summary of this new project and talk about what's happening with broadband, uh, in Southern Virginia where, uh, most of our work is done. Uh, we were started in two thousand four, we're a nonprofit, uh, five oh one C four organization, basically a technology company that's nonprofit, if that makes any sense at all. Uh, we were created in two thousand four to try to solve the digital divide, uh, in the area of Southern Virginia, which basically stretches from Ro- uh, Roanoke to Richmond South, uh, about twenty-six counties. Uh, again, the same problems that, that y'all see here, lack of broadband, uh, lack of, lack of that, uh, poses problems for economic development, job creation, uh, community anchor institutions, schools, public safety, you name it. Uh, so we've been involved over the last ten-plus years to solve that problem, uh, and actually have some good, um, good solutions, good projects that have come out of that, and, and actually some, some benefits. Uh, I show this slide because this is what our, our challenge has always been, uh, there's three ways we, uh, kind of created ourselves. Uh, we're a nonprofit organization, as I mentioned, uh, but as part of that, we believe in private sector participation. We're very unique in the entire country about how we put our network, uh, out there. You'll, you've heard about municipal competition and, uh, broadband authorities and other groups competing with, uh, private sector providers like Comcast, Verizon, CenturyLink, companies of, of that nature. Uh, we took a, a different approach, we created what they call an open access fiber network. Uh, basically what that is, is we have a fiber optic network that we've built throughout the region. Uh, that is open to all telecom providers, uh, at the same rates, at the same cost, uh, and that's really leveled the playing field. Uh, we stay in the wholesale business, we're not in the retail business, uh, so Comcast and Verizon, uh, are actually some of our largest customers. And have, uh, great working relationships with the big guys and the, the little ISPs as well. Uh, this gives you an overview of our map, uh, as you can see, the blue lines, if they show up okay, uh, are about eighteen hundred route miles, uh, of fiber throughout twenty-six counties. Uh, that fiber connects every industrial park, uh, we now connect a hundred and fifty-one K through twelve schools. Uh, so of the twenty-six school districts, uh, one hundred percent now have fiber optic connectivity, uh, to their, to their facilities. Uh, we've also connected, uh, lots and lots of towers, uh, as part of this project. You know, last mile broadband wireless expansion is a, is a big part of what we do, the citizens in Southern Virginia are, uh, extremely interested in that. Uh, so we've been able to, uh, connect about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty towers, uh, within our, uh, Southern Virginia region. Uh, and that's connecting T-Mobile, Verizon Wireless, the cellular companies, uh, building a fiber to a tower and then bringing that, uh, bringing that back. The, uh, the pink lines that go up to Northern Virginia, uh, those are existing networks, uh, we've done some fiber swaps with Comcast and other providers to allow us access into Northern Virginia, which is the heart of the internet in Ashburn, uh, Virginia, and that has made such a tremendous difference in our region. Uh, to give you an idea, uh, of what that has meant for business, uh, we had our company Jones New York in South Hill, Virginia, before we started, uh, they were paying eight thousand dollars per month for a T-one line, if, I don't know if y'all are familiar with that terminology, uh, and they had three of them. So twenty-four thousand dollars a month for about four and a half megabits of connectivity. Um, once this project was up, they were able to, to access this, uh, get a provider, and now they have a hundred megabits of connectivity, uh, for about two thousand dollars a month. So, really, really amazing how technology, uh, changes the, the world. Uh, as part of that, kind of our long-term growth was connecting rural Virginia to the rest of the world. Uh, and you can see with our map, uh, Ashburn, Culpeper, all the way down to Atlanta, uh, again, we did not build those fiber routes. We, uh, connected through other providers, but uses our, uh, network to, to provide that connectivity. Uh, that has been a huge benefit for Southern Virginia to date. If I know, if I remember my numbers right, we track this, uh, projects we've been directly involved in has generated two point one billion dollars of private sector investment and about nineteen hundred jobs is a direct result of this investment. And I should say, the investment, uh, was part of the Virginia Tobacco Commission, uh, and the federal government, uh, through the Stimulus Act projects. And I'm also glad to say, all those federal projects we have came in on schedule and under budget. Uh, this is an example of some of the wireless backhaul projects that, uh, we have, uh, one in Halifax, Virginia. Uh, this is a really unique project that it, uh, uses solar power, uh, it has Wi-Fi within the town, so next time you're going through Halifax, Virginia, you can stop in the town center if you have an iPad or iPhone or whatever. Turn it on to Wi-Fi, you can pick up the signal and you can get online, uh, for free for about an hour. Uh, and then you can reboot that every, every other hour. Uh, that's just a benefit we're doing to the town, just to see how that works, uh, it's been up and running now for, gosh, almost two years. And has been working flawlessly, and I, we show a little speed test here. Um, when you connect that, you're getting about nine megabits of download and about three megabits of upload speeds.
What does that cost to do that, provide that?
Uh, it cost us about ten thousand dollars to do that one, one location within Halifax.
That's per month, that's per year, that's total?
That's a one-time cost.
A one-time cost?
Yep, the solar power is, uh, free, well, I guess, it's not connected to commercial power, so we don't have a power bill. Uh, we provide the fiber connectivity on our own network, so that's basically a sunk cost. Uh, and then we, uh, allow the ISP to basically open up the pipe and, and see what happens there. So yeah, it's, it's a really interesting model that there's no recurring cost and, you know, benefits the town and the residents, uh, there in Halifax.
Have you had any pushback from the big suppliers on that kind of thing?
Zero, uh, because it actually allows, uh, people to use this network instead of theirs, and in, and in Halifax, Virginia, there's not a whole lot of, uh, competition, good competition.
I understand, but I, but I, but I, I understand that the, uh, uh, people are not worried about what you do in Halifax, it's what you're gonna do in Atlanta.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
That, uh, they get upset about.
Absolutely, uh, yeah.
And the precedence in Al- in Halifax and Richmond is, say, why can't I have the same thing as Halifax?
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, the interesting part about Halifax, uh, that it's, it's designed just to give you an hour's worth of use. So you really can't run a business or a residential customer on it, you can't watch Netflix on it, uh, so it's really designed as a, as a, um.
Lost leader?
Pretty much, just showing the technology that it can work and, uh, people get a chance to use it.
All right.
Yeah.
What, you mentioned the, uh, partnership you have with, uh, Microsoft and Sharp.
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you, Brian, uh, we have engaged, uh, with Microsoft, as you know, they have a very large data center in Mecklenburg County, Virginia, about one point seven billion dollars of investment. Uh, largest data center in North America currently for them, uh, in a little, little town. Uh, the, um, they have a big program called Affordable Access Initiatives. So they're going around the world, and if you watch, uh, Satya Nadella, their CEO, uh, his passion and belief for Microsoft, and again, when I say Microsoft, this is a completely different Microsoft than was there seven or eight years ago. Um, his vision is every single person on the planet connected to the internet with cloud connections, and you can do all those things. Microsoft, as a ninety-billion-dollar corporation, realizes that if you can't get internet and you can't get connected, you'll never be a customer, because everything's online now. There's, you can't buy a DVD or a CD of Office and put it in your computer, like the old days, so, uh, they have spent a tremendous amount of money and resources to figure that out. They're doing projects all over the world, uh, we got their attention, uh, earlier in twenty fifteen, uh, talking about our schools and our partnerships and our, um, access to funding. And we worked out a, a pilot deal where, uh, we are doing the largest TV white space deployment in North America. Uh, so Halifax and Charlotte County schools are part of that, uh, we have fiber to the schools, they're providing, uh, technical support. And we're gonna put the electronics, build the towers, and then serve the residents around there. You know, it's funny, in Halifax and Charlotte County, well, anywhere really, we have the same exact problem as they have in Tanzania, in Kenya, in the Philippines, that when they're at school, they got great connectivity, and then when they go home, guess what? Nothing. And what we found is it's not necessarily an access issue, so some of these families do have access to DSL for cable modems. Surprisingly to us, it's an affordability issue, that a lot of our families simply can't afford thirty-five to fifty dollars a month for a broadband connection. Uh, so the partnership we've worked out with Microsoft, uh, they're putting in, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're matching that with funds. We had the Tobacco Commission grant for another five hundred, uh, and basically, we're going to design this TV white space network to serve, uh, students and residential facilities all throughout that area, educational content is free, we're gonna try this to see if it works. Uh, so if a student wants to watch a thousand hours of Khan Academy of how to do algebra, they can do that with no cost. The problem is they're using Verizon Wireless today, and if they have a, a data plan, you know, you watch a couple of videos and you're over that plan, and it's incredibly expensive, uh, to, uh, to do that, so, we're doing this with Microsoft, they're providing the, the costs. Uh, the grants have paid for the deployment of the electronics, and we're gonna, we're gonna see what happens. Uh, first flight, first phase should be up this spring, uh, March or April timeframe, so we'll keep y'all posted. But pretty exciting project, Microsoft has the ear of the, uh, Chair of the FCC and a lot of other folks that are really anxious to see how this project works and if it works. Uh, real quickly, this is just a list of all the different carriers, about forty-five companies that use our network today, as I mentioned, uh, everybody from Verizon and Comcast all the way down. Uh, this was the interesting slide, this is a project that is, that is happening. Uh, it's currently under, uh, design, this is a company called Zayo, they're out of Colorado, a very large global, uh, fiber optic network operator. Uh, they have, let's see, probably about six months ago, uh, have their board approved a capital project for a new fiber route between Washington DC and Atlanta. Uh, even though there's a bunch of fiber routes, there's need for more. So, uh, Zayo's one of our, uh, strategic customers, uh, they came to us and we're looking at some routes and what would be helpful for NBC. Uh, and thanks to, to Brian's discussions about, you know, the need to get this type of network in Orange County. Uh, we talked to Zayo and said, hey, if y'all could bring this down from the Manassas, Ashburn area into Culpeper, and then come south on five twenty-two, that would be able to tie into our network, uh, just outside of Palatan and Chesterfield. Uh, and then that's a fairly easy fiber route for them to, to do, it's at their expense, they're not looking for county dollars or anything like that. Uh, and then this will be basically your access ramp, uh, to not only get connected to Culpeper and all the networks there, but directly into NBC's network and all the things we do as we continue to expand, uh, our footprint. So this is a really exciting project, uh, that's currently, uh, underway, I'll be meeting with their team, uh, next Monday, uh, to finalize some of the designs and timing. Uh, but we anticipate, um, permitting and design work, uh, for the actual build, uh, will start some, sometime, uh, first quarter of twenty sixteen, and then be under construction by the end of the year. So that's, uh, that's pretty exciting, it's a very large fiber optic count, I think it's over four hundred strands of fiber, so, so plenty of work. And we've been working with Brian and some of the other counties to identify access points and, uh, making sure that Orange County can take advantage of that network, that it's not just a pass-through with no off-ramps.
Can you comment on, on the decision process for, for those access points? I mean, i- is that a Zayo decision, or is that a NBC decision, or how does that get?
It's both, yeah, so, uh, the fiber will route through because we are acquiring fiber on that route for other customers and ourselves. Uh, we can say, you know, place a, uh, what they call a splice point, basically an access, into that area, and then we'll be able to get on and off of that route, uh, from that location, uh, so we're heavily involved in that decision.
How many, uh, how many splice points or access points do you, uh, normally have? How many miles between them, or is there any standard, or is there any?
Sure, great question, uh, usually every two to three miles, uh, are, uh, splice points. Uh, if you think about it, fiber on a reel, uh, usually ten to fifteen thousand feet of fiber, you can get on a single reel. Uh, and then as that's deployed or blown through conduit, you know, you have to connect them up, so that's where the splice points are, over two to three miles.
And do all of those splice points have the potential of becoming an access point?
Uh, they do, as long as we kind of talk about that ahead of time, uh, because when they do that, it's, as you can imagine, it's pretty expensive to connect four hundred and thirty-two strands of glass together, in a little outside box, so, um, yeah, we, we try to work all that ahead of time, so we know which ones we plan to get in and which ones can just be a straight pass-through. In a little outside box, so, um, yeah, we, we try to work all that ahead of time, so we know which ones we plan to get in and which ones can just be a straight pass through.
Just to, uh, uh, kind of update where we are with it, uh, and, and just one point, Ted. You showed the route going up to the Terramark facility in Culpeper. I think one of the other maps that you had shared and I've shared with others, uh, showed a, a route coming down Route Three and then going overland up towards Manassas.
Uh, that's correct, that's a future expansion project.
Right, right.
Yeah, through Route Three.
Um, yeah, so right now it's to getting it to, to Terramark, but, uh, for this initial build, okay. One of the things that, uh, we're going to do with Ted and, and some of his other staff is, as you know, we had Orange County Schools, I know Dr. Tanner's here and Darrell Hadfield. Uh, with their plans for fiber connectivity for the schools. Uh, certainly you heard the discussion earlier about our public safety system and towers and last mile. Um, I, 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 you all know, I, I can't emphasize enough what fortune this is to, to be coming through Orange County. For us to then start looking at, at I think what are, are significantly transformational, uh, uh, technology for, for the county. Um, we're going to work pretty hard with the county schools, Dr. Tanner and her folks, uh, us. And then Louisa County Government and Louisa County Schools to find out where and how, and to get the access point Ted mentions along this route. So at least we've preserved our opportunities.
Correct.
And, uh, now as we start kind of getting ourselves sorted out of how to build these laterals, uh, for, for our purposes. Um, I, I would add, I know some folks from Lake of the Woods area, we were talking about that one, a future expansion project down. Um, but that, coming out of Terramark and coming down Route Three into Orange County is not contingent on anybody, I mean, we could...
Correct.
We could undertake that type of project on our own initiative as well with NBC.
Absolutely.
For sure, so, um, that, there's always opportunity for that. Um, one of the things, as you heard earlier, we're gonna start trying to figure out pretty quickly our tower needs and also getting you information on what would be our institutional users, our industrial parks. Our, our, um, uh, and then, then routes that we may be looking. So I think we'll at some point, pretty quickly, be with the Broadband Committee and coming back to the Board of, here are some decisions we would like for you all to make, at least preserving our opportunities.
Excellent.
Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely, and the tower idea you have about sharing public safety and broadband is a fabulous idea. Uh, we have a tower in Appomattox, if you ever want to take a road trip, uh, and look at that, we provided a spot on the top of that tower for public safety. That was at no cost, cause the county gave us the land for free in the industrial park. Uh, and then, um, we have some ISPs that are on that tower, not only serving around the tower, but shooting off to some farm silos. Uh, and serving a lot of, uh, rural residential farm customers, uh, out in the farming communities of Appomattox. And that's been a really big benefit.
Could you, the, um, the list of, of your, uh, internet providers or ISPs?
Sure.
Is, you know, there's must be thirty or forty of them there. How is, how is that determined, is that something that's strictly between, uh, someone who wants to do that and NBC? Is that how that is determined or is it by the county or?
No, correct, uh, they'll ask us to say, hey NBC, we need a connection from point A to point B. And then we work with that company and they sign a contract with us for services and then we figure out what they need, sign some contracts and agreements and, and go from, go from there. Uh, but if you have ISPs that are not members of ours, we, we do that all the time, we, we add customers and, um, have that, have that ability.
But they don't get an exclusive right, do they?
Oh, no, 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 no exclusivity, uh, that's the, the whole beauty of an open access network, especially because we use...
I could, I could be getting my cable from, from COGS and somebody else could be getting it from GDT next, next week.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's correct.
But it's, there's basically, uh, I, I'm assuming someone who wants to do that, they negotiate a contract with you. And then they obviously have to purchase the equipment that allows them to...
Correct.
Into your network and, and then sell it to...
Yes, they can provide their own equipment or we also provide lit services, which means we provide the blinky lights, for lack of a better word. Uh, and can provide a, uh, connection just plugging into, you know, ports on their, their equipment. So, I, either way, we can do dark fiber or, uh, lit services. And not a lot of companies do that, as you can imagine. Yeah, so the nice part is once you have a fiber into a business, if they don't like their customer ISP that's serving them and they're using our network to get there. They can fire and bring somebody else in and there's no change to the infrastructure, it's just a, a different company.
Ted, could you comment a little bit about, I, I guess I want to say your, your business plan or business model?
Sure.
For, for, uh, serving communities like Orange as an example and, and building those laterals and, and, uh, getting to the premises and these kind of things. What, how are you approaching that as, as, as NBC? For, for those of us who have followed you, we, you know?
Sure, sure.
Help, help us understand your plan and what you're looking for and, and how you make decisions and, and, and these kind of things, just to... I'm not asking for an hour tutorial, but just to...
Oh, sure, sure.
Give us a, an overview of, help us see where you are.
Okay, uh, yeah, so as a, as a nonprofit organization, we are sustainable, uh, which means that if we do expend dollar, capital dollars on a project, we do need a return on that. Uh, our return's about ten percent. Uh, so what we do is a, a business says, hey, I need a fifty megabit connection for internet connectivity. We identify where the business is, where the closest access point or lateral or splice location is. Uh, determine what the projected capital cost of that build would be. Uh, work it through our ROI model that says, okay, if they're gonna buy a, a three-year contract or a five-year contract with one of the providers that are using our network. Uh, then we take all those together, we determine, can it be done at a, uh, with no installation costs? And then work it out through the monthly rate, or sometimes there's a installation cost as, as part of that. Uh, the business can pay that, the ISP can pay that, the county, we've had some economic development groups pay that, just to help enable that connection.
Grant funds?
Grant funds, correct, correct.
What about a case where there are multiple users, do you, do you do that same analysis, but, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
For a hundred users or whatever the case might be?
Yes, uh, so especially when we're in an industri- industrial park and you have, let's say, five businesses and one has expressed an interest. Uh, we have a team that goes out and just talks to the other businesses and says, hey, just to let you know this is happening, if y'all have an interest, we'll price it out. And the more people you get that want a part of that, then obviously the lower everyone's cost comes.
So you're doing some marketing as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, businesses find that to be a real big advantage, uh, cause again, we're not serving that business. We're a, we're a non-competitive threat to them and, uh, they can select whoever they want on the, on the network.
So taking that kind of model and saying that if there are two governments, two school systems, we would look at, you know, what the capital cost would be to serve the, those anchor institutions.
Correct.
What their data usage is, and then what other business customers NBC may be able to market along the way.
Absolutely.
And then that would kind of go into, here's the capital cost, here's what the usage may buy it down, here's what capital dollars equity that, say, school system or county government or both can bring to the table to bring it down. And so start working it as basically a business model from that standpoint.
That's correct.
One of the things I read that was interesting is you have, uh, I guess it's part of your charter or something, uh, sort of a, a unique relationship with VDOT as to right of way.
Yes.
Can you, can you comment on that at all?
Yes, uh, great relationship with VDOT, uh, we provide anywhere we go and use VDOT right of way, uh, we provide them two strands of fiber at no cost. So VDOT has obtained eighteen hundred route miles of fiber within the Commonwealth at zero dollars. Uh, it's been a great, great partnership. And, yeah, so we, uh, plan to continue that anywhere that we, uh, we build fiber. We've had some areas we've had to do prescriptive right of way, I mean, you know, I mentioned that earlier and that's always a challenge. Um, but for the most part, we try to stay within that, that VDOT right of way whenever possible.
Those two strands get you access to that right of way, basically?
That is correct, yeah, it's a resource sharing agreement, uh, and actually other companies have started to do that with VDOT. So it's a, you know, it's a nonprofit, reduce the burdens of government, it's a 501(c)(4), we love that. Cause we're, we're helping the state, uh, do their mission and they're helping us by not charging us an arm and a leg to, for permits.
Any further? Well, I was just gonna say, given that we're, w- we'd like to, uh, make available these resources to, to our citizens. Any, any guidance that you want to give us here in the last second or two to, uh, as to working with you or putting that together or these kind of things?
Any suggestions for us?
Your suggestions, yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're beginning to take the fir- we're thinking about taking the first step, let me put it that way.
Okay, good, uh, yeah, so, uh, once we have some final designs from Zayo, uh, which should be hopefully next week, uh, when I meet with their team. Uh, we'll have some more definitive information on that as well as timing, uh, when the actual construction will start and design work. So we'll work through Brian, uh, on that, but as far as, uh, customers and things, you know, what we found in our experience in rural Virginia. Uh, you know, Lake of the Woods is different, you've got a huge residential community with, uh, lots of easy, well, I should say easy connections. Um, that's a great fiber to the home model. Uh, I will say if the expectation is to get fiber to every single residential dwelling in Orange County, that may be a bit of a, a stretch. Cause we, we'd love to do that in our, uh, Southern Virginia, but it, it's just not practical, uh, money-wise. That's really the only, only challenge. Uh, but using wireless is a, a great alternative, I mean, this works all over the world, it's a proven technology. And, uh, we believe that's gonna be the, the way forward to reach those areas that can't get it, uh, today.
So really the, the next step is certainly through my, uh, relationship with Mid-Atlantic and Ted and our little coalition that we have going. Um, just so you know, I'm going before the Louisa County School Board, uh, first meeting in February to make a presentation on the white paper. They're pursuing, I think, I'm looking at Darrell, um, the same kind of process with E-Rate and capital funds that you all are positioning yourselves. So, I, I think between Louisa County Schools and Orange County Schools and then this board and certainly Louisa Board, there's, uh, a way to leverage a lot of, I guess, uh, opportunity. I know Darrell's had conversation with the school's consultant on E-Rate and, um, not trying to get too far ahead of you Darrell, but everything seems to be lined up. To be able to use those E-Ware, uh, capital funds to maybe help with a deployment, uh, of thirty-three and fifteen and back to twenty. So it's a stay tuned kind of thing, but we're on the right track, I tell you, gentlemen.
Mr. Rissio, thank you very much for coming down here and giving us this presentation. Uh, we've got a couple of, uh, school board members and, uh, our school superintendent may want to pick your brains as well.
You got it, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
Alright. Next is...
Yeah, if you, uh, animal shelter, uh, director is here for, uh, her report and then we can go close there.
Alright, why don't we do that?
Depend mine till afterwards, please.
Yeah, okay. Uh, let's get the consent agenda, can I get a motion on that? Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, alright, next is the, uh, animal shelter report.
Okay, thank you, you, hello, how are you? Um, we have had a very busy six months, as you all know. Uh, we started off the summer filled with pets like we usually do, it's like good every summer, um, but we had some employees cut, we had two new employees in August. Um, in September, our numbers did start to come down, start to see the light, and then we had October come around. Um, in October, of course, we had the big day on October nineteenth for Peaceful Farms. And the same day, we had a farmer who passed away two weeks before, who wanted us to take in a bunch of his cats. So all this happened the same week, so it really stressed the s- shelter. Um, a week after the case started, we lost an employee. Uh, so we were at thirty percent above, uh, capacity of what we usually have at animals and then we lost an employee. Two weeks after that, we lost another employee. Um, so I was cleaning cages, everybody's cleaning cages. Then one of our volunteers fell, who, um, does all of our pictures for our pet finder in a newspaper, so if you haven't seen it in newspaper, that's why. Cause she's at the nursing home, um, she fell, um, that put a little bit of strain of us, Gina started taking up the slack of that. And then she had a family tragedy that happened Thanksgiving weekend, uh, that took her out for a while. Uh, the reason I'm saying all this is, um, we went through a lot in our shelter, our employees were amazing. The two new people are young kids, I call them kids, they're just out of school and they stuck through it. One of them actually went out the first day of a seizure on a case with me and saw horrific things and they've stuck in, um, stuck by our side and been there. And I just applaud all the shelter employees, they've all been through a lot. Um, we worked on our trap neuter response meeting, release meeting, which I'll go in a minute. Uh, we ran a cat adoption special to try to push the cats out, because we didn't have a lot of employees and we, we had dog crates sitting up, pet cats and dog crates. Um, and then of course Christmas came and went before we knew it. Um, and the two new employees were putting in a new program, it's a veterinary assistant, it's very, very cheap, but it trains them in disease, disease transmission. And what they can do to better the shelter and also prevent disease and hopefully bring costs down for, as in veterinary costs and everything. So our stats are preliminary for two thousand sixteen, we still have some PetSmart contracts out there. Uh, but so far we took in less dogs than last year, um, so of course less went out, but we took in a lot more cats, of course. Um, one thing that's notable to look at is our euthanasia stats has gone down, which is really good. That shows that we are indeed a no-kill shelter, meaning we put down less than ten percent of the animals. This includes cases, as in seizure cases, doc- dangerous dog, vicious dog. Um, also, all of our animals are only put down veterinary recommended, you know, they're so sick, there's nothing we can do. Uh, so that was really good, the shelter accomplished that this year. A lot of that was the hard work, the dedication of employees, doing good cleaning and preventing disease from transferring. Uh, the vet was actually really impressed this summer and said, y'all did a really good job this year, we didn't have to make decisions. PetSmart, PetSmart helps us out a lot, we have four PetSmart stores, three in the Fredericksburg area. Um, and then our Humane Society goes on every weekend, on Saturdays and Sundays and does PetSmart adoptions for dogs. Uh, last year they adopted out a hundred and five dogs at PetSmart and three hundred fifty-eight cats, so that was amazing. So the Peaceful Farm case, the first week was really hectic, we had a lot of people calling in, wanting to bring donations, wanting to help. Uh, I think Gina and I were busy up front, then they went in and back cleaning, uh, just staying off the phone. Uh, we all said a lot of calls about pets that, you know, that people were concerned that were there. Um, the veterinarians, all of these pets we took in needed vet care, so it was really hectic getting the vets in. Uh, some of them that I would look at and say they didn't need immediate attention, you know, would have to wait a week or so, cause it's impossible to get it all done. Uh, and like I've told you, the employees worked really hard and then we assisted animal control. Uh, myself being a former animal control officer, I went out and assisted some because it was, it was a lot going on and it was a lot for two to handle. Uh, we took in a total of seven dogs, sixty-nine cats. There's still a few cats floating around out there, um, there's a caretaker that was caring for the horses, the last, horses left last week. So she's just going out once a week just to make sure there's nothing out there, so the citizens can be rest assured it is taken care of. Um, the horses, we really didn't have anything to do with the horses, other than the paperwork for the state. Um, we had a bunch of horse rescues that stepped up, if it wasn't for them, I don't know what we would have done with seventy-seven horses. So they really, uh, helped us out a lot. Uh, donations, we had so many donations, we still have sheds full a couple of months later. The dog food and cat food, we had a lot, the four H kids really came through, four H kids were awesome. They did a trailer fill at Food Line in the town of Orange. And one of our members, a friend of mine, said, how could you resist these cute little four-year-olds coming up asking you for money? They sent the cute ones after you, you know, they write a hundred dollar check. So they did really good, their total for us was fourteen twenty and then Louisa Tractor Supply, the four H kids down here did one for the horse rescues. So I don't know how much they raised, but they literally came there with a horse trailer full of food and stuff. Um, for our emergency vet fund, the figure was about twenty thousand, but that's hard to say, cause that's also our Christmas in there. Every year people donate at Christmas time, which helps offset our emergency vet fund from the year if we're in the red or if we're out of the year. So it's hard to tell, um, we got a lot of donations the first couple of weeks, but then you start getting Christmas floating in there. So right now we're doing okay with the emergency vet fund, it's evening out. Uh, cat litter, we had a lot of cat litter, blankets, kennel bed, we got enough the last couple of years, bleach and larger detergent, uh, which helped out a lot. Um, the veterinarians who assisted was Dr. Jacobson, an Orange veterinarian, who is who we have our contracts with. Uh, Dr. Jacobson came there to the shelter and then we sheltered a lot of, um, over to Orange Vet and they filled in a void. Locust Grove veterinaries stuck up, um, and took two, six of our kittens, just to get them out of there and actually put them up for adoption. And did some adoptions out of the clinic down there. Uh, the horse vets did, helped out with the sheriff's office where the two vets in the county in Blue Ridge, Equine. Our volunteers really came up and assisted a lot of cat transport to the PetSmarts, cause once we did the special, cats were moving out PetSmart really fast. Um, so they had to make a lot of trips to Fredericksburg and of course all the laundry cleaning. Cat and dog socialization, that's really important, cause they come in, they're scared, especially the cats. Um, they went through a lot that first week, we thought they were going to be furrow, would have to find a farm to send them to. Once we messed with them a little bit, they've become house cats and we were able to take the PetSmart and adopt out. So they were just scared and the volunteers helped a lot of that. So many people helped, we didn't get everybody listed, cause they would literally come in, drop stuff down and leave and I didn't even know anybody was there, cause we were so busy. Um, I remember one time I walked up front and it's a bag of change on the counter, I said, where'd that come from? Some little kid put his savings in, wanted to help out the dogs, um, so it was really cute. But Tractor Supply gave three hundred di- dollars... But Tractor Supply gave three hundred dollar gift cards to us and each horse rescue that helped out. Call Pepper Farm Garden Center, they put up a display and there, the people that came into the store bought gift cards, telling eleven hundred dollars, and then they in turn gave us eleven hundred dollars worth of food. They told their customers, whatever you guys donate will match in food. Um, Orange Madison Co-op gave us a pallet of litter, cat litter, of course, we've already gone through that. Uniform placing, Call Pepper bought us bags and bags of used towels. Uh, one cute thing was this nursing home in Warrenton. Uh, one of the nurses lives here in Orange. Um, the elderly people up there made gift bags for the cats and dogs with homemade blankets for us to give out. Food drives, Med Spa, Virginia, the Somervilles, Wal, Lightfoot Elementary School, Oakland School, um, some of the veterinary hospitals in Charlotte, well, I know numerous other places that did drives. Um, I didn't get involved or depressed much, only because with me going out there, being a key witness, I didn't want to accidentally say something to harm the case. I did do an interview with the Orange Review, um, six weeks into it or so, because I wanted to thank all the support, because we had so much support. And then Twenty-Nine News did, after things settled down, come out to report. Um, like I said, the vet bills are covered. We did have a lot of overtime, but our food budget and our janitorial, the bleach and the stuff supplies are down so low, I think we'll be able to even out. So I think we'll be okay. Even though we took in a lot, it looks like we're going to even out. So where do y'all go? I just put one here for your knowledge, the rescues that helped out, Hope's Legacy took twenty-six horses. Um, they're a really good rescue that I sent a horse to six months ago, had already checked out. Central Virginia Horse Rescue, Win Home Farms is here in Orange, it's David and Charlene Skywell. Um, they took a couple of, a couple of other minor farms in town. General Giants, I'm Maryland, specializes in draft horses, they took some, and an elderly horse rescue in Pennsylvania, took some. Deceased horses have now been placed. Uh, the court order gave them to us and investigations worked really hard to find a previous owner, so they've gone back to their previous owners. They are gone. The dogs and cats, six adopted, one went to Pals for seniors. Um, I would say maybe more than half of them adopted out now, mostly through PetSmart. Floyd County Humane Society did take some, a rescue out of Fredericksburg took some. Um, GDU, which is a rescue we use all the time, took some of our other animals to make space for these. Ricky's Refuge also took some, um, from another situation, and KR, which is a rescue in the area, helps us out all the time. Um, the farm cats, to touch briefly, everybody didn't realize there's other stuff going on in the case. Like I said, this gentleman passed away, we took in twenty-five cats from him that week. And thank goodness Ricky's took most of those because they were feral. Trap Neuter Release, we have put that on hold for a little bit, only because we were dealing with the case. They did come talk to me to help us set it up, which would be very beneficial for the county's citizens. Will lower euthanasia rates, also, we will lower the amount of animals that come into the shelter. Uh, pretty much, we've already had a couple of people take advantage of it and use their program. Instead of bringing a cat to the shelter to surrender it, if everyone wants to pay it for you, will you release it back in your property? Sure. Right now, they are taking care of the monetary part of that. Our Humane Society wants to set up, hopefully them doing that or something like that to help the citizens and help us out. Um, just to go over what the Humane Society's done in last year for us and how much they do. Last year, they bought all of our canned food, which totaled fifty-eight hundred dollars. They bought us a new washer, our washer died in the middle of the Peaceful Farms case. They paid for that. They get us cat litter boxes that are disposable that saves two thousand dollars, which saves a lot of times, we don't have to wash them, we just throw them. Uh, and they do our microchips at a thousand dollars and they donated over six thousand dollars to Emergency Vet Fund just in last year. So toll they've helped out is eighteen thousand dollars in one year that they've helped the citizens, the animals out. So real quick, just a few of the happy tales. Jones came from the farm, came in very skinny. He was the last one to leave because he's elderly. He, um, I took him down to Univale Elementary School, no, I'm sorry, Lightfoot Elementary School, the week before Christmas, they did a food drive and when the teacher saw him and he wound up going home with her. So Ruffles was very mean the first day when he came in, tried to attack me, wouldn't let me get him out of the carrier, now he's at my house. Um, he had a really bad ear infection, I took him on the treat and he hasn't left. Mo was our probably worst case, he came in very skinny and had heartworms. We did treat him, he just got adopted about a week ago, um, doing much better. Adele, the caretaker that was out there, wound up adopting him. And then Sneakers is one that Mouse Stories took, he had to have a lot of work done. Uh, but we got him fixed up and they took him and found a home for him. And then Harrison was another, one of the dogs that we fixed up. Finally, at the end, we went and did a Christmas party last week, because like I said, it's been a rough couple of months, everything going on. We actually had a good time. Any questions?
I just have one comment. Uh, in addition to everything they do out of the animal shelter, uh, our dog decided to take a field trip and, uh, disappeared, uh, going down six-twenty-one. And, uh, turns out, the girl picked him up, picked her up, took her home and everything. But first thing I did, I called down to the animal shelter and of course, they were closed. Jenny's voice is on the recorder saying, leave a message, I'll call you back. I check the voicemail regularly. Within fifteen minutes, she called me back. She'd spoken with the girl that picked up the, the dog. Needless to say, within forty-five minutes, we had our dog back. And that made life very good in my house. So, uh, I just want to say thank you, Jenny, because that, that is above and beyond all the normal.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that.
And it's our goal to keep them out of the shelter and keep them, because pets are becoming like children to people. And it's our goal that they're happy.
Well, after a very bad situation, this is a rather good story to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
All right, you ready? Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matter: consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body; and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County Board of Supervisors authorize discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, we're in recess.
Yeah, but, yeah, because he's like, I need you to put your blessing on it. It's like...
Okay, go ahead.
Members of the Board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frain?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
All right, next item, uh, we will move on to item fourteen, Public Comment. Have anybody signed up for Public Comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Speaker, we have, or Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Jane Blair, Representative of James Madison Museum.
Good evening. It's a pleasure meeting y'all. I am president of the James Madison Museum of Orange County Heritage. The idea of a museum to honor James Madison, the fourth president of the United States, and the man most historians call the father of the Constitution, started in nineteen seventy-four, when the Honorable Helen Marie Taylor petitioned the Orange County Bicentennial Commission to help fund a museum to honor Mr. Madison. In nineteen seventy-six, the funds were provided to purchase the old Powell Motor Company building. When the Madison Museum opened to the public, it became the only museum in the nation to honor Mr. Madison. And the former showroom and offices of the Powell Motor Company became four exhibit rooms, an office, and a gift shop. The large automotive bay in the lower level became the museum's Hall of Agriculture and Transportation, in which today contains various agricultural tools and equipment, vintage automobiles, slaves, and a seventeen thirty-two cube house. The building is now roughly eighty-seven years old, having been built around nineteen twenty-eight, and is in desperate need of repair. When rains come, the roof over the Agricultural and Transportation Hall leaks, which requires us to put out buckets to catch the water until it can be squeegeed out, thus preventing, we hope, any damage to the artifacts that are housed there. The bricks on the ru, front side of the building allow water to seep into the museum. Two years ago, the museum sold its back lot, which allowed us to put a new roof over the front part of the building. We recently mailed out appeal letters to the members of the museum, asking for monies to help repair portions of the building. And I must say, some of that repeal money has come in handy. After years of being the only museum in the nation to honor Mr. Madison, visitation and local support of the museum saw a decline. And we found it had to change if it was to survive, as many small museums across the nation failed. We do not want that to happen to our little museum, now known as the James Madison Museum of Orange County Heritage. We added to our name a little to reflect what the museum encompasses. For this past several years, the Madison Museum has expanded its collection to include not only a permanent black history exhibit, but also a museum dedicated to preserving tidbits and highlights of Orange County history, a county that has played a pivotal role in the history of this nation. Last September, we added to the name in an endeavor to let the passing public know that we are more than James Madison. And in fact, to be truthful, Orange County is more than James Madison. It's also Alexander Spotswood. It's the Knights of the Golden Horseshoe. It's the American Revolution, the founding of this wonderful nation of ours. It's the Civil War, a war that almost divided this nation and in the end, united it as one nation indivisible and eventually, just as for all. In addition to its history, it's a county of agriculture, wineries, and the most beautiful landscape that catches one's eyes. It's definitely one that invites tourism and we embrace it. Over the years, visitation members and funds have dwindled. We have tried many different ideas to increase our visitation and local support. We are fortunate in that the county of Orange furnishes us through a grant application a thousand dollars a year, while the town of Orange gives us ten thousand dollars a year. In an effort to support local businessness, we support Ted, Ted, I mean, Ted Ground Signs, Phase Office Supplies, Family Dollar, and other, and we do all of our shopping locally. We help promote Orange terr, uh, Or, we help promote tourism in Orange County, often acting as a satellite for the visitor's center by advertising visitors, or advising visitors and guests of other local attractions, local restaurants, bed and breakfasts. And our gift shop, we're beginning to feature local artists. We're trying to support Orange County. There is really no place, other than the historical society and the public libraries, where visitors can view the written word on the history of this county. But it is the museum where visitors can see and experience who, what, and how the people are, who made this county, actually lived. They can see the furniture styles, the clothes, the tools, and the various modes of travel that have gone before us. We welcome children into the museum at no cost in an effort to show them their history. The museum is in the process of converting one of its back rooms into a library, where children, teens, and researchers can utilize or increase their knowledge. I must say that over the course of the last three months, we have begun to see an upturn in visitation. And it's not much, but it's a positive sign. But we can't do it alone. We need your help. We also advertise and help in the Orange, uh, in the National Trust Preservation Magazine, which reaches six hundred thousand people east of the Mississippi. These ads generate requests for information from the museum. And when we mail out the information, we include information on the town, the county, and we sort of ask for like a weekend destination package. Our museum administrator, Bethany Sullivan, writes a monthly column entitled From the Collection, which teaches, which features different artifacts in our collection, and it's published courtesy of the Orange County Review. But with low visitation, we do not take enough in to, at the present, to accomplish many of our plans and goals. We want to preserve our building. We want to keep it from deteriorating further than it has. We want to complete that back room and turn it into a library. And we want to pave our parking lot so that we can allow guest vehicles to park on either gravel or, uh, ta, uh, pavement instead of the grass. We not only need your financial support, but would also like to encourage any one of you to become part of our Board of Directors, or even volunteer to become an advisor, to help guide our museum to the next century and to save it for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Okay. Next item is the public hearings. First public hearing is a request for tax exemption status on property owned by Orange Nazarene Church. Do we have a representative from the church?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Thomas Rodriguez, the pastor of the Orange Church of the Nazarene, located one fifty-nine West Nelson Street, and I reside at one four four five six Blue Ridge Turnpike. I appreciate you guys' consideration of the request. I saw you six months ago when we sold our other property and we purchased a parsonage now. We do hold several events, both weekly and monthly, that happen at the house. Counseling also happens there to where it's in a, in a non-threatening setting, which helps me do my job as well. It is open to the congregation because it is part of the, the church in that regard. But it is also a residence for the Parsonage Family. And we ask that you guys would consider the tax exemption status. I do ask that you could correct, uh, the name of the church. It isn't correct because it is, uh, Orange Church of the Nazarene. That's our legal name. And I thank you, you guys.
All right.
Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Any questions? All right, let's open the public hearing. Have anybody signed up to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we had one speaker that was Reverend Rodriguez, and he's already...
All right, okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we'll make the note to have the cor, the correct legal name and the adopted.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next is the request from the tax exemption, uh, from Lake of the Woods Association. Representative of Lake of the Woods?
I'm here on behalf of the Lakes of Woods and Mr. Rodenberg, the general manager, is also here. And we wrote a letter to Mr. David Day to the effect that I don't believe that Orange County is able to tax common land, common and open space in a planned unit subdivision. And, uh, we'll, under the provisions of the Code Section fifty-eight point one three two eight four point one. And these are the rules and regulations for Lake of the Woods, uh, and I would say that it is a very planned community. The, um, code provides that all property used for open or common space shall be construed as having no value when it is located in a planned development which contains open or common space. The subdivision is part of the planned residential development recorded before January one nineteen eighty-five and actually nineteen sixty-seven. It's subject to the requirements of the Property Association Act of Virginia. It's subject to the requirements of the Property Association Act of Virginia and has automatic membership in its membership association. And those are the three requirements for a designation of open space or common space. The rationale for this is that the taking this off the tax rolls shifts the value of the lot onto the improved lot, or onto the lots that are improved at or for sale. So that the beneficial use of the common area is therefore in the individual lots. And so we would respectfully request that the county not pass on this, uh, to grant, uh, tax exempt status because I don't think it has the authority to do that. And, uh, the, uh, I'm here to answer any questions, as is Mr. Rodenberg, if you have questions of him.
I have one question. Does, does the association, uh, need to or plan to take any action to give it some type of formal designation, uh, as open space, common space, or whatever, or the like? Or is that inherent in the, in the deed process that's already in place?
It was deeded by, uh, the heirs of Eduardo Ilano, uh, to be used as open space.
Okay, right.
And the fact of the matter is that it has a creek or stream that goes through the middle of it. We tried to sell that lot for back taxes and didn't even get a bid. Uh, at which point, the association thought, well, maybe we better take it in and they can use it for their, uh, lake maintenance and, and stream maintenance within the subdivision.
All right, uh.
So I, the correct, and I think Mr. Carter asked this, the public hearing, the request actually needs to be withdrawn. The public hearing doesn't need to happen, and, and I concur with his assessment that this is exempt.
So the association needs to formally withdraw the request for the tax exemption.
Is that, and that, is that what you did? You withdrew? I thought, that's what I thought I heard, that you were withdrawing the request because you didn't think it was appropriate.
Well, we will request then that the board not pass on it, that's it. Yes, we, we would withdraw the request due to the statute.
That it's not needed, okay.
We will contact and go over the status of this lot with the Commissioner of Revenue.
And then if she has a question, just have her contact. Tell her we talked, and she can contact me.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Okay, the request has been withdrawn. Let's move on to hearing number three. Request for supplemental appropriation and budget amendment. For the Orange County Public Schools. Have a representative from the schools.
Is there, we have multiple, so. You may decide upon whom you would like to call. So it's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the school board, who respectfully requests the carry forward or carryover dollars for unspent funds from fiscal year two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. We provide you detailed information regarding, uh, the ma- the projects that are outlined, how the rationale for the expenditures. As you'll note, the majority reside in the area of CIP and facilities. Now, there are others earmarked in there that are coming from states, some grants, as well as Medicaid, which is a federal reimbursement. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right, any questions for?
One, one other thing, uh, there is an item at the, at the end of the list that we put out for
Yes.
Superintendent provides this as kind of an update, uh, to their agenda packet material, a contingency
Yes.
by two hundred and forty thousand. As you all know, enrollment's going down, there is potential for drop in state aid, and so this is, I guess, a buffer?
It is a buffer. Um, but last year, we had, uh, had the pleasure of working and with a budget that, uh, we saw some increase in enrollment last year from, uh, the previous year of budget. We had an uptick in the fall, but then a gradual decline, um, in the spring, which brought in just a few extra state dollars. We held on to those and set them aside. Um, and did not utilize them, knowing that their, the population was fluctuation, fluctuating at that point. So that has been a set aside for us, and now that we're facing declining enrollment uh, this year, much more than we would have projected. Um, I think everybody's well aware that, uh, that kindergarten population, uh, did materialize, um, as we're finding in other areas, not just in Orange. Um, but also, we're having declining enrollment overall. So in order to balance this year's budget, we're asking to put that money aside. It won't be utilized for anything other than balancing a budget. And if the students come in and the numbers go up, and we don't need that, uh, we, uh, will set that aside for the CIP. That's the plan.
Any further questions or comments for?
Just one comment, I, and we, we had a meeting the other day discussing this subject, and I think it's important that we, uh, recognize that of the roughly two million dollars, uh, request, there's, uh, the majority of that are truly capital projects
Yes.
that are either underway, or will be underway, or are, are nearing completion, those kind of things. That's the overwhelming amount of money.
Yes.
There are three other categories that I think are important to, to notice that are a, a bit unusual. Of money for the performance contracting, uh, service that, uh, for the debt service is a piece of that, a rather, rather large piece. Uh, and then there is federal Medicaid money for the special education services. So that, the amount of the actual carry forward in, in the normal sense is the very last item, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and I think that's an important distinguish, uh, it's important to distinguish that because going forward, I think we want to work to the point where we, when these carry forward requests come in, it is that kind of money, that, that operating money,
Yes.
uh, such as the two hundred and thirty-nine in this case, that we'd be dealing with and, and not capital projects that just because they have to be done over the summer, split a fiscal year.
And we agree with that, and we greatly appreciate the relationship you've had with the, um, school board in order to develop that capital project fund, because it's been, um, as I've looked at it in the year, that I've been in sort of a rolling amount. So it has, uh, been built for the purpose of, uh, uh, projects such as the replacement of the roof on the, um, athletic center at the high school. It's something you can't fund in a year, but it's been rolling to do that building. Um, so thank you for making that distinction, because the majority of the funds are in that area of the facilities and capital improvement. We appreciate that.
If I could, I just, one, one prospective statement with this, before you take action. I think one of the things that Superintendent and I, and I think your representative, Mr. Goodwin, and Mr. White, and Ms. Page, and Ms. Winter, we all kind of got it, Glenda and Alex got around the table with the liaison committee and kind of sorted through this. I think you'd be pleased to know going forward, we're going to establish the next budget cycle, capital proj- well, it's already there, excuse me. A capital projects fund. And then that'll develop a budget, just like you all do, and so it'll be very transparent that these monies will go through. Procedurally, I think one of the more critical elements is in the adoption resolution. Those projects are for the life of the project. So once that approval is granted, it's not this recurring thing that has to come back each, and be evergreened every, every fiscal year. So I, I think back to what Mr. White's point is, when we get down to the carry, it'll be really in the world of these operation funds that will have some reason why they need to be, be carried.
So we just change the way the ordinance is adopted for the capital?
Right, when, when you all get down to that adoption process, we'll have the language for the schools, just as you have it for the county.
And, and I, I should say of that, that last category, the, what I'm calling true carry forward, for lack of a better description at the moment. We did talk about establishing the, uh, working with the, the schools to establish a set of policies that define what's eligible and what should be carry forward, and how that's done, and these kind of things. We're, we don't have that to, to talk about tonight, but I think that's an important step as well, so that we have some common understanding of, uh,
That's something our, our financial subcommittee should be working on.
Well, I think, I think at this point, there are two, two other tasks that the, the school board, the, the board's liaison. One, the, the policies related to these carry forwards and certainly capital projects fund. And then there's also a, a recognition to look at the master plan for the high school after the budget's, you know, this is kind of late spring, uh, and, and going back and revisiting that and seeing what, what, what's there and, and things. And I think those will all be work products coming forward from the committee to, to the board and to the school board when, kind of, when their time is ready.
I agree.
Only other comment is hopefully, uh, due to the popularity of the lottery, closest I've been able to figure it so far, if the state does what they should, you should be getting about three hundred thousand from the state that you're not playing on. That's if they do what they're saying.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I heard that, yeah.
We will, we will, we understand the if, but we will look forward to that, uh, opportunity from the state, and we'll understand that big if. I thought you were gonna mention the other lottery.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what you were planning to do. So.
Go out and buy a dozen tickets.
Take our financial reserve, boy.
Exactly. That was, that was my thought, Mr. Johnson.
All right.
One point three billion would fund the category.
Sure. Any other further discussion? All right, let's open the public hearing. Have anybody signed up to speak? We'll close the public hearing.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, we really appreciate it.
All right. Mentionment to the Orange County Court of Ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, this was an item that, uh, was brought to us by the registrar that, the way our ordinance is currently structured, the central absentee ballot is only for general elect, or voting precinct is only for general elections. And so she asked me to clean it up so that it would be for primary elections as well. Well, in cleaning it up, I realized most of the language was redundant. And so I, I boiled it down to the simple paragraph that establishes a central absentee precinct for all elections. And, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. All right, any questions for Tom? All right, let's open the public hearing. Have anybody signed up to speak? Close the public hearing?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll move back to our regular part of the, uh, agenda. Next item is the county attorney's report.
No report.
Uh, county administrators' report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we're going to go through, as you know, I added several other items to my report. Uh, may first speak on the, uh, oh sixteen, oh seventeen operating budget guidance. Um, uh, we met with the Finance Policy Committee here, uh, last week, gentlemen. I think it was last, last Tuesday. Um, and my board report, it speaks to, uh, the school superintendent and I have met along with, uh, Mr. Ryan and Ms. Bradley to start sorting through, uh, this coming budget year. Um, and what I guess, what I want to present to you is what we presented to the committee last week. And before your places is a spreadsheet with a green bar across the top. At the end of the day, after working in all the, the reassessed values and, and the land use information that we received, the county's total assessable base, including growth for this past year, has increased a, uh, point five three percent. And so what that means is that we're less than the one percent that requires the, the pro- the, I guess, elongated advertising and, and notice period for adopting, uh, this year's tax rates. Uh, and so with that, um, let me stop there. Does everybody, I know Glenda's here, and, and if you have any questions.
I, I actually just had one, is, is this work, this sheet, does that give us, maybe this is a question of Tom, all that we need to justify or, or, uh, defend the fact that it's less than one percent? I mean, is this?
Yeah, it's just math.
This is all, this is?
Yeah, it should be all we need.
All we need, okay.
So, um, with that, I mean, that's kind of where we are. Unless there's any other guidance you would like to impart now, we're working on a budget, we're starting the process. And, um, there's an amendment to the calendar that this directly, uh, impacts, but that's a couple more items down.
Like Tom says, it's man.
All right, uh, next item, uh, we had a German Wilderness Area Plant Steering Committee. Uh, I now have three board members who can report. Uh, but essentially, we heard from our consultant, Zan Nelson, on the first go-round of the, uh, historical, uh, assets inventory. Uh, I, I think there's a lot of information she's, she's pulled up. I think she's going to be able, we're able, going to distill down what is meaningful, I guess, for that area, uh, and then what is not. And, uh, I, I had to leave early to, to help a child, help one of our daughters get off, uh, on a flight, so. Gentlemen, if you have anything else?
Well, uh, one of her findings so far is that according to the, uh, D eight Department of, uh, Historic Resources in Richmond, there are something, I won't forget the number right exactly, but there are something like a hundred and eighty-two sites identified on
Within the GWAP.
Within the GWAP on the DHR reg-
A quartet I've recovered by Walmart.
Unfortunately, well, Route Three's covered a few of them too, so, uh.
There's something like eighteen hundred in the, in the county.
In the county. Uh, so, you know, is there a lot of history here? Yeah, I think we knew that. Um, I, I, I guess more than, than ever, I'm convinced that this is something we, we need to spend a little time and pay a little of attention to because it will nibble at us forever if we don't.
Well, I think, I think that, uh, once, once she has identified the significance of those hundred and eighty, uh, there'll be a lot of decisions that are easy.
Yeah, some of them are somebody stuck a shovel in the ground and think they found something, and that, and there's no other
There's no other, uh,
Indication of it.
Indication of it. And so those, uh, can be, uh, you know, uh, but we'll have that information so that when we're talking about any land use decisions on that piece of, uh, that square foot of property, uh, we know, uh, how much consideration to give to historical, or how much not to give.
And she also got the program fairly close to the time of the meeting and was not able to vet a lot of the information. Uh, one of the things being a house on Route six twenty-one, Smackdown District, or Section one. It's not there. So there's a number of them that I'm sure, as she vets them, are going to be removed
Sure.
anyway. So, um, I, I think we'll be helping DHR a tremendous amount as well.
Well, and some of them are real, I mean, Pilgrim Baptist Church is, it's there, it exists, it's real, it's whatever, a hundred and something years old. I mean, so we, you know, there's some that are known, we just, as Lee said, we gotta sort through the one shovel versus something like that.
And once we, and once we have a- all of them categorized, and all of them described, and, and, uh, and, and if there's more investigation, uh, done, that done, then that's the, provides a resource. When somebody says, well, that, you can't do it, it's historic, you say, yeah, it's a shovel, you know? Or, uh, when we're looking at something, we say, hey, we, we wanna avoid that because it is something that is significant. It gives us an opportunity to know what we're making our decision on, rather than, than conjecture.
Yeah, I mean, this really is part of our due diligence, as I see it, as much as anything else.
Absolutely. The one thing that I, I took away from it is that there's going to be, at some point, where you all should be able to, with a degree of certainty, establish a threshold. If, if, if a site or structure is eligible for listing on the National Historical Register of Places, uh, Structures, or Buildings and Places, that's one thing, if it's listed, if it's eligible for listing, if it's not getting there, then that may not be something that's, you know, that you it's good to be aware of it, but it's not something that you would pivot on a land use decision.
Yeah, and that, and that threshold, uh, we may even do, come up with a threshold before we go any further investigation too. Before we spend too much more money on, on investigation.
Or an expectation on developers to do additional
Yeah.
information.
Yeah.
The only other update is the next meeting is a pretty significant meeting. The Steering Committee is to hear from our utilities consultant, that will be coming back with That will be coming back with, uh, potential densities and...
Can we get that on the twenty-first instead of the twenty-eighth?
Uh, no, that, that, um, I'm sorry, I thought we, you know, I, that was a drop in, it was, we just, it ain't happening.
Okay.
We're moving into February. We're gonna move into February and I think...
I just heard back from Kurt this afternoon with some dates from the, um, consultant, so we'll be touching base with the steering committee.
All right. But, no, I, that...
Okay.
They were excited to get there to the twenty-eighth, and I said maybe the twenty-first and that kind of, so... All right, uh, next item would be the, uh, Germana Community College capital project. As you know, uh, Dr. Sam and the community college has had grand, great plans, um, for the Locust Grove campus to make it's the healthcare, um, center for the, the community college, uh, system in the service area. That project, uh, came forth in the governor's proposed budget. Uh, there is planning money, which I think is the architectural engineering money. Uh, it is not included with the bond package with other projects for community college. Um, I have emailed and been, uh, in, in communication with Dr. Sam, he and I are meeting next week. I today, uh, had a phone conference with the county administrator in Stafford because the Stafford campus project was not in the bond package from the governor. And so, uh, he's speaking with his, uh, his delegate, the, that, from, from Stafford about that. Uh, he and I are going to connect up, uh, if there's an opportunity for us to, to collaborate and advocacy for these, both these projects benefiting one school system, uh, we will. I'll probably get a better idea from, uh, Dr. Sam where things are, but as it stands now, there is funding for the planning, which is in, is key, but there is no build money, uh, in the bond package. The other data point that I want to share with you is I'll keep this kind of communicating with you all as I learn it. There is, um, there is quite a bit of, uh, resistance at the General Assembly level to, that the bond pack- the projects that are in the bond package as proposed the governor are too rich, and that they're maybe scaling it back. But then there's a countervailing percept, or perspective that there are not enough projects in the bond and that the state's debt capacity can handle those projects plus other ones. So, as you know, this is gonna be in that tug of war between the governor and the legislative branch over what goes into the bond package, so...
Tied into that, uh, the regional commission also sent a formal letter of, uh, support and courage before.
So, if, if, if and when, uh, we need to communicate, I think the standing agreement here was that for the chairman to be able to, to do that, just as we need to do it, and then certainly communicating back to the rest of the board. We wouldn't, you know, what, each board meeting, if we have some information, I'll bring it forward, but we don't want to wait to a board meeting to, to put some paper out in, in, to the General Assembly.
What's the timing, what's the...
They, they start tomorrow, uh, it's a sixty-day session, so crossover days, Feb- first week in February, so, um, probably the next two weeks, you'll probably get a good idea of what's going on with the bond package. Anthony Romanella, the county administrator staffer, just called me tomorrow, he's actually meeting with the speaker tomorrow morning and should get kind of feel of where things stand for Germana Community College relative to the bond package.
Kind of surprised that they would put the money for the engineering, but not the building, unless you're gonna do another bond issue the following year, which you're not.
No, the last time this happened for parks and schools and whatnot was ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah. So, why would you do engineering that's gonna be twelve years old by the time you get the money?
This is a Haley's Comet moment, so we want to make sure.
All right.
Uh, last I have, uh, when we talked about the revenues of being at point five percent, that keeps us, that gives us additional time. What before you is a revised calendar for the budget process, and I would act, uh, ask you all to adopt that tonight as a revised budget. The more salient point of this is that I've already communicated to the school superintendent, uh, there's an additional week that she was excited about, uh, for her presentation on behalf of the school board, the closed school budget. And then everything's kind of shifted out one more week.
Any qu- any questions for Brian on that? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen, that's all I have.
Okay, next item, any new business? Any old business? Any board comment? Any questions on the informational items? Do we have any, uh, appointments to boards, commissions, or committees?
Boy, we're all wealth here, it's...
All right. Next item is, uh, on the calendar is a schedule, a public hearing, uh, for amendments to the I two zoning on February ninth.
Gentlemen, you remember what this was about, we, uh, wanted to, uh, uniform our I two zoning, uh, particularly with the setbacks and so forth, to make sure we had a competitive advantage. Planning Commission.
Planning Commission was, is appetizing at the second time.
Okay. Any, uh, any questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All in favor of the scheduling the public hearing on February ninth? Say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. All right. I need another motion.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.